I don't know if it's metal or, this is metal. Sometimes that's not. Oh, metal. Yeah. Thank you.
It was interesting, it was turn and burn.
What's that, what's his name?
Yes, yes.
Good evening, everyone. Seeing Quorum, the chair opens up. The Mashpee Planning Board meeting of Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, 7:00 PM, being held here at the quiet meeting room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I'd like to welcome everybody, remind everybody that we're being recorded and video graphed. If you have the opportunity to comment, make comment to the planning board, just note that all comments are made through the chair. If you have the opportunity, it's a little bit of a new setup tonight, so there's going to be a mic in the mic stand. You'll say your name, your address, and then make your comment. The planning board will either address your comment right there, have somebody on staff or the project proponent address the comment, or take it under advisement. I'd like to invite everybody at this time to stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, in the flag of the United States of America, into a republic where it stands, one nation under God, and universal liberty and justice for all.
Our first matter is review and approval of meeting minutes from April 3rd, 2019. So I've looked at them, I think they're fine. It entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So be it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
David Whedon abstained.
Abstained.
Okay, thank you. We have three public hearings tonight, one at 7:10, 7:15, and 7:30. So we're going to do other items until we get to the time of 7:10. New business, signed special permit decision for shared driveway at 147 and 155 Old Bontable Road.
The statutory appeal period for this decision, which was made on March 21st, ended on April 10th, and the town clerk certified that no appeals have been filed. So at this time, requesting the board sign the decision.
Can I date it today?
Correct.
Are we all signing this?
Yes.
Does Rob sign it?
But he on there.
Whoever the voting members were, so I have to actually...
We voted on this, right?
Yeah, let me just confirm who was here.
Yeah. Dennis was. Dennis is always here.
Mary, Dennis, David, and Joe, but just David's signature.
Good for you, babe.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so next we'll go to the chairman's report. Just would like to have everybody put on their calendar, July 29th and 30th. David Whedon forwarded this date to me. It's a save the date for One Cape, 2019, it's July 29th and 30th. The Cape Cod Commission, which is our regional planning commission, has a summit every year. They do it in the summer because they want everybody who lives here, even part of the year, to participate. It's, I don't know what the topics are yet.
I'm not sure either.
But it's a save the date, and last year, they had a whole day on housing, and then a whole day about wastewater. So it was, it was very informative, and you also get to meet a lot of commission staff. And it's, it's at the Waquasit Resort in Howard, which is absolutely beautiful, so it's really nice. So save the date, July 29th and 30th. The next thing I wanted to report was that... Okay. The Cape Cod Commission held a meeting, a listening session about the Mashpee Rotary. It was last week, April 11th. They are looking for comments about how we feel about the Mashpee Rotary, what we like about it, what we don't like, and what potential there is. So for example, I put down, one of the potentials for the Mashpee Rotary is, it's big, and there's a lot of space to do stuff there. So that was, there are some potentials to that Rotary, even though, you know, traffic can be challenging in the summer. So if it's okay with everybody, I was gonna give Evan the contact information, because there was, there was 18 people at the daytime session and less than 10 at the evening session, and they had, it was a beautiful day in the spring, but they did expect a little bit more public comment. And they go right into making concepts, and they zing right along on these studies. So let's put it, do you want to put it on the planning board website, once I get, pull all that stuff together? So look for it, because they are looking for public comment. And I have the 29th down here, but I can't remember why. But if I remember later, I will let you know. We have two more minutes. Board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission.
The, the regional policy plan was recently approved. It went into effect as of February 22nd, 2019. You can read up more on it on the Cape Cod Commission website. They did hand out, published copy of that for commissioners to review. I believe one was sent to the town as well. Aside from that, I don't have anything further to report.
All right. Community Preservation Committee, town meeting is coming up. Do you know the date off the top of your head?
May 6th.
It's May 6th. And so there were several warrant articles requesting money be awarded from our community preservation program for historic preservation, open space, recreation, and affordable housing. So I encourage everybody to read carefully their warrant and come to town meeting. Design review.
No meeting.
Plan review?
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
Yes. The balloon bylaw is a work in progress.
Okay.
We're having a little trouble with that. And the FDA is looking at mooring areas, at marinas, for the effect on shellfish quality. So there may be some regulations being looked at or being passed. Mash Greenway and Quasiter Footbridge, no update. Mashpee Community Garden have a website looking for people who would like a garden plot.
Okay, so, all right, so the community garden is right on 130?
Yep.
I think there were applications in the hallway, if people are interested in getting a, a community garden plot. They're right in the, they're, they're...
So it's just starting. Istuaries restoration, we just received 300,000 oysters from Bruiser, and we're waiting for a thousand, what they call set bags for delivery, to put the oysters in. And they'll be looking for help putting the, the shellfish in. The Mashpee Nutrient Control Bylaw for the landscaping, on April 15th, the bio-stimulant will be added to the website. Let's see. Water sampling for all the ponds will, will be done twice this year, and that's just being started. Conservation, the herring ladder, April, March 29th, April 3rd, we've seen the first, first fish enter the fish lattice, which is, I guess, an early date. Conservation Department and Pollinator Gardens working on the main entrance for the community gardens, pollinator gardens. Damage and dumping on conservation lands, there have been some tires that are being dumped, but overall, things look better. Quasiter River, Quasiter River Restoration, that Baytown meeting.
Oh, good.
Okay, all right.
And the folly bag restoration update, and the Charles River Restoration is being funded. That would be it.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:10 meeting, public hearing. The project proponent is Windchime Condominium Trust, they're being represented by Bennett Environmental Associates. This is to consider an application to modify a special permit issued February 4th, 1987, and recorded at the Bontable Registry of Deeds in Book 5734, pages 225 to 269. Such application was made for consideration of the release of funds, release of escrow funds held under the special permit to make improvements to the onsite wastewater treatment system through the BRP WP68 Treatment Works Plan Approval Permitting Process, and to seek reduction in the wastewater treatment monitoring plan as commensurate to the environmental monitoring requirements specified under the groundwater discharge permit 263-3M1. So I'd like to recognize the project proponent.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and good evening, ladies, members of the planning board. I'm Dave Bennett, and I'm representing this. I believe, though, that we withdrew the application for the modification of the groundwater monitoring, so I believe before us tonight is, is basically a housekeeping issue, the escrow funds have been released, the fam is in effect, and I had provided in your packages a copy of the draft engineering report that, with accompanying plans, that is likely to be filed within the next 10 days. We will move from that, that's a prerequisite of the BRP WP68 application, wherein final design plans for the plant upgrade at Windchime will be submitted to the department simultaneously with the Board of Health for plan approvals and upgrade.
Okay, so we have a draft planning board decision in our packets. Have you seen this?
Yes, I have, and I've shared that with Mr. Mooney, who is the chairman of the Windchime Condominium Association, and it is in agreement with our understanding, and we'd appreciate if we could move forward and, and wrap this up.
I have no comments.
I do. I normally would recuse myself if this was a monetary thing, but it's, really has nothing to do with, with money, it's just the repair of the plant. Do you agree?
The only thing to note is, at the open of the public hearing, Joe, you did recuse yourself in the decision reflect your recusal. So the vote tonight would be for the approval of the modification, because we still need to endorse the draft, the modification of the special permit. That simply replaces the long-term performance guarantee as a performance bond held by the treasurer with the state financial assurance mechanism, so the can, I noted in the chronology here, your recusal. So just for consistency, I just wanted to make you aware that the decision reads that.
Yeah, well, the only thing I have is, I have a few comments on the proposal ahead of us, and...
Do you, do you agree to recuse yourself from the vote?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
No, I just want to make sure that Mr. Bennett is aware of some of the issues that are here. Well, I'd like, go on with this. On page three, the, the plan you have, the one with the schematic on here...
Yeah, I got it.
At the bottom, it says, according to the assessors' records, there are 101 two-to-three bedroom condominiums, with a total of approximately two to four bedrooms associated with the property. That's incorrect. It should read, there are 156 bedrooms.
Two-to-three bedroom?
Ah, two-to-three bedrooms, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a 50% increase.
So, right, so that's...
Oh, the total number you're saying is...
And the total number of bedrooms, actual bedrooms, will be 314.
So where's...
So it's, it's quite a difference there. And when we get on to page four, it said, the average monthly flows vary from moderately from a low of about 9,000 gallons in April 2017, to a high of 18,000, 18,000 gallons in August 18th, right at the very top. Both extremes considerably less than the Title V Tabulated Design Flow Criteria of 31,610 gallons. Well, I researched some of the older records, I don't have, not really allowed, I guess, to get some of the, the records, but I do have some of the older records. And I found out that on June 17th, 2010, we had a low of 4,050 gallons, which is really below the 9,000, and I was surprised to see it that low. But a high on December 4th, 2009, of 34,463 gallons, which is quite a bit different than the 18,000 high that, that's in your proposal.
So where'd they get these numbers from?
Where did I get these?
No, the applicant.
I don't know where they, where they got the numbers, but I have the records that were supplied by the original plant operator, who ran the plant for, oh, I don't know, maybe 10 years or so. If, if you like, I could, I could give you these, these are the groundwater permit things that the operator has to fill out.
Certainly, I'd appreciate that. I, I quite frankly, we're speaking to the time of our operation, and I just did the math on the 31,000 gallons that it's approved, and the maximum number of bedrooms would be 287 at 110 gallons a day. So I took this off the Eldridge plans for the septic system, the original installation. I believe that there was a special permit that eliminated a certain amount of, of bedrooms that were approved at one point, but I can't speak to those issues. I've made those notes, Joe, and I'm, I'm happy to incorporate those into the report.
Well, my concern is, when I, when I read this, is that we're building a new plant. Let's build it right.
Well, the 31,000 gallons is what's approved, okay? So I can't, I can't add any bedrooms or anything than that. The plant is being built for the, the groundwater discharge permit that is listed at the 31,000, whatever it is.
Well, if it's built, you know, for that, although, like I said, in, was it January 17th, 2010, no, December 4th, 2009, it was 34,000, which was slightly over, which I'm sure the plant could handle that.
I'd like this, I mean, those, you have copies of the raw information from the DMRs?
Yeah, which you could have.
May I have that?
Yeah.
Could I approach?
Yeah.
May I approach?
It's a little different now with these new tables.
So those should be on file somewhere.
Okay, I've, I've made it, made the noted changes, and as I said, this is reported as a draft, so it's subject to review and finalization. I will incorporate those per our meeting today, tonight.
Yeah, I just, I was just concerned that if we're going to build a plant, that we build it with all the knowledge that we have.
And I'll have to check the assessors' records, that doesn't mean that they're right, they're correct, but I, I, quite frankly, these numbers were not arbitrary, they were taken from those records, so...
Yeah, well, I know that the...
I know, you've lived there, and you were the chairman of the board for a number of years, so I don't doubt your, your firsthand knowledge of it.
Well, as soon as I read that, I knew there was something wrong. But it, I think if we, we've caught it early, fix it, paperwork is right, the plant should be right.
Joe, how many bedrooms are you saying is there?
There are...
Total bedrooms?
Altogether, there are 314.
314?
Yeah. Yeah, would it, is, there are, there are 50 buildings in there, and there are only two three-bedroom buildings in the development. All, all the rest of the, the 300 and, the 156 units all have two bedrooms.
Well, it's the total bedrooms that would make a difference on the total flow that would be allowed under the groundwater permit.
Yeah, it's 156.
So 156 bedrooms or units? The total design flow is based on...
There's 314 bedrooms.
Okay, that's all, that's all that matters, it doesn't matter how many actual units there are, it's the total number of bedrooms that would have to be applied to the, to the permit.
Yeah, because the flow, that's what they...
That number is, is higher than the 31,000, so it might be a good thing to verify, because that comes out to 34,540, which is more than what the design flow criteria is, so...
Yeah.
Would be a good thing to verify, just make sure the record's right.
One question, are there any undeveloped lots within the subdivision that's built out, fully?
No, no, all the, the lots, he, when the place was proposed, the planning board, it was a 78er lot, and they divided 35 to the development, 35 to conservation, and there was only enough then to build so many homes, so everything, it's built out.
Okay, any more comments, Joe?
No, I'm all set.
Dennis?
I'm all set.
All set? I think you're good, all right. Are there any comments from the public regarding this matter? It's a public hearing. Evan or Charlie, do you have any comments?
No.
No.
Okay, so I accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So be it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So I, I don't have any comments on the, the planning board decision for Windchime Condominiums. It's a special permit modification, the paperwork's in front of you, it's dated April 17th, 2019. I'd entertain a motion to, to approve as presented.
So be it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And then we have one recusal. Okay, so it passes. So Dennis, are you willing to sign on behalf of the planning board? I'll notarize your signature, are you signing it voluntarily for its stated purpose?
Dennis?
Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, don't let me forget to do this before we go.
I will not. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, David. We got through it, yay!
There's a recording of this, or is it included? Do we make the recording?
The recording of the special permit modification. So I'm gonna hold the original copy for the 20-day appeal period, assuming no appeals are filed. The decision will come back to the board for their final endorsement, each voting member will sign the document, then that original signed document will be transmitted to you as the, as the applicant on behalf of Windchime Condominium Trust, recorded the registry.
Great, and then we send a proof of recording.
Yes.
Charlie, the government number is 40,000, so...
Please say.
Joe, Joe is probably right, I'll check those numbers.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:15 public hearing for the May 6th, 2019 town meeting, water. These are proposed zoning amendments. Do you want to take this matter now, or postpone it till later on tonight?
I think we should postpone it till later on tonight.
Is there anybody here for this matter only? This is, would be a proposed zoning amendment? If it's okay with everybody, let's...
Motion to...
I make a motion, continue this public hearing till 8 o'clock?
How about 8:30?
8:30.
8:30. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:30 public hearing for Blue Sky Towers 2 LLC. So we have a new setup here tonight, so the project proponent can feel free to just take a seat. a seat. Just to let everybody know that it's a shared microphone. It's a wireless microphone, so when it's time for public comment, we're going to have to set up the mic stand for the public to use, because we no longer have our podium.
Just wanted to note to the applicant that I let them know of our technical difficulties this afternoon. I did get that portable projector. If you have your presentation, would like to set it up. You can do so in that laptop, and it'll just be not as high quality as we would have hoped for, but I do see that you brought some other materials as well, so.
Thank you.
And then is this the...
The public hearing notice? I printed the... The former is from last June. One on the rear of that same piece of paper is the most recent. We re-noticed following the DRI.
So the chair is going to read in the public notice, Town of Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight. The Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January second, two thousand and nineteen, at seven-ten at the Mashpee Town Hall. Sixteen Great Neck Road North to consider an application by Blue Sky Towers Two LLC for a special permit to erect a personal wireless service facility as required by Section one-seventy-four dash twenty-five H-nine and one-seventy-four, Section one-seventy-four dash forty-five-three of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw. The property is located at one-oh-one Red Brook Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts Fire Station Number Two, identified on the Mashpee Assessors' Maps as Map one-oh-four Lot Two. This public hearing was continued from the meeting of June sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and is being reopened following the Cape Cod Commission's decision to approve after its review as a development of regional impact. Submitted by Mary Wagan, Mashpee Planning Board. It was printed in the newspaper December fourteenth and the twenty-first. That meeting on January second was continued to April, was it April second?
April third.
April third, and then again continued to tonight.
Correct.
As chair, I authorize Robert Hanson, our alternate planning board member, to sit on this matter as a full planning board member. The chair would like to read the following statement into the record. Now that the hearing has been opened, I would like to offer a statement for the record. In the interest of full disclosure and assuring that the applicant is afforded a fair and impartial hearing on its application for a special permit, I hereby note and submit for the record an undated letter issued to the Mashpee Board of Selectmen and Town Council by counsel for the applicant, Elizabeth R. Thompson, which asserts that I and board member Balzerini have engaged in improper ex parte communications relative to this matter and have otherwise acted in a manner so as to deprive the applicant of due process of law and an impartial form for deliberation and action upon its application. Said letter references an October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen letter submitted to Attorney Thompson by town planner Evan Lehr, which is also submitted to the record. First, I hereby categorically deny the substance of the purported ex parte statements attributed to me in those correspondence, and I question the veracity of the source of the alleged statements. Further, I hereby expressly deny any allegation that I or this board have denied the applicant any legal right to or opportunity for a fair and impartial tribunal on the merit of its application. For the record, I wish to state unequivocally that I, as chair and as a member of the planning board, believe that I can and will engage in this hearing in an impartial and unbiased manner and will base my ultimate vote on the application solely upon the applicable law and the record of these proceedings. Accordingly, upon due consideration of my options, I see no reason to recuse myself or step down from this matter, and I decline to do so. The chair now recognizes Dennis Balzerini.
I would also like to offer a brief statement for the record. In the interest of full disclosure and assuring that the applicant is afforded a fair and impartial hearing on its application for a special permit, I wish to note the same correspondence just referenced by the chair and specifically the allegations therein related to me personally. Notwithstanding any statement I may have made previously made related to this proposed project in respect to any proposed amendment to the Wireless Faculty Overlay District Bylaw, I also wish to state for the record that I, as a member of the planning board, believe that I can and will engage in this hearing in an impartial and unbiased manner and will base my ultimate vote on the application solely upon acceptable law and the record of these proceedings. Accordingly, upon due consideration of my options, I also see no reason to excuse myself from this matter, and I decline to do so.
So here's the two correspondence for the record. Those go into the official... So good evening, everyone. On behalf of the planning board, I would like to welcome everyone here tonight. I would again like to remind everybody that this meeting is being videographed and recorded. If you have the opportunity to address the board, please do so at the mic stand. Provide your name and address for the record and then state your comment. Just to let everybody know who's never been to a public hearing before, all comments are made through the chair, which is myself. Please wait for the chair to recognize you before speaking. The board may address your comments directly or ask the project proponent to address your comment, or the staff or our consulting engineer to direct your comment or take your comment under advisement. As always, the board appreciates your participation in matters which come before the planning board. It really helps us make our decisions. I would now like to review the order of this public hearing. The first thing that's going to happen is the chair is going to recognize the project proponent to present their application to the board and the public. The second thing that will happen is the chair will then recognize board members, providing them an opportunity to address the project proponent regarding the proposal. I would like to remind the planning board members that it's most advantageous to the town that we wait to express any type of opinion regarding this matter until substantial testimony or if not all testimony has been made and the public hearing has been closed. The chair may ask at that time questions to the project proponent as well. The chair will then recognize the town planner and our consulting engineer to offer comment on the matter. Then the chair will open it up to the public. I know it might seem like a while before we get to you, but we will get to you, and everybody that's here that wants to make a comment will have that opportunity. I am going to ask, because of the size of the crowd, that I'm going to ask people who support the proposal to come forward first, the people that are neutral, and then people who are opposed to it. The chair will then acknowledge written comment received today. We have a rule that we don't go past eleven o'clock at night for public hearings. I know. I know. I'm just saying. If the board members do start to feel tired for any reason, the chair would, you know, end the public hearing sooner to continue it to a different day. Okay. So I would like to now recognize the project proponent to present their application to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Thompson, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Towers Two LLC. The proposal before you tonight is for a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot monopole-type telecommunications tower to be located at one-oh-one Red Brook Road in the town of Mashpee, which is the location of the Mashpee Fire Station Number Two. As part of this proposal, we have Verizon Wireless proposing to locate their antennas at a hundred-and-forty-six feet above ground level and T-Mobile proposing to locate their antennas at a hundred-and-thirty-six feet above ground level. Also included in this proposal is space available to the town of Mashpee for their emergency safety equipment at one-hundred feet above ground level, and this potentially leaves space for two additional wireless service providers in the future with all of the equipment based in the compound, the fence compound at the base of the tower. This proposal is a result of a request for proposals issued by the town of Mashpee in May of two thousand and seventeen, of which my client, Blue Sky Towers, was the successful bidder. I note that this is a result of an RFP for a couple of reasons. One reason, as it relates why it might be important to the board, is that having the town as the landlord allows the town to retain a level of municipal control over a site such as a wireless facility in a way that a private landowner would not. The second reason I highlight that this is the issue of a RFP is that this is a recognition that as far back as two thousand and seventeen and from what I have learned much earlier, the town officials had recognized that there was a serious gap in wireless coverage in this area in South Mashpee, to the point where they felt that they needed to act affirmatively to seek a solution and to solve the critical life-saving issues with the lack of service in this part of Mashpee. A little procedural background for you that was alluded to in the opening. The proceedings here began by filing of a special permit with the planning board. Because this project is a mandatory development of regional impact with the Cape Cod Commission, the proceedings were suspended, and the applicant went through the Cape Cod Commission process. That process entailed several subcommittee meetings and then a meeting before the full committee. During those proceedings, we worked very closely with Cape Cod Commission professional staff on all aspects of the project, from historical, archaeological, engineering, and most importantly, for this type of project, they retained a wireless expert, David Maxon of Isotope LLC, to review the voluminous technical data that was supplied by my client, by Verizon Wireless, and by T-Mobile's radio frequency engineers who are here tonight and will testify in just a bit. As a result of those proceedings, the subcommittee recommended and the full commission voted to approve this project, finding most importantly that the probable benefits of this project far outweighed any possible detriments to the project. Specifically, they found that there was a significant gap in wireless coverage for not one, but two federally licensed wireless service providers, and that the proposed location at the Mashpee Fire Station was not only suitable, but the only feasible location to close those gaps in coverage. Those findings, again, were based upon the expertise and the review of the technical data supplied by our clients and in coordination with their wireless expert. When it was learned that this site was not in the wireless overlay district, the applicant filed for a variance with the Zoning Board of Appeals. That application was heard on February thirteenth and was unanimously approved that same night, finding that it would be a hardship to the applicant if it was not approved, and again finding that that height of a hundred-and-fifty feet was the minimal height necessary to close those significant gaps in coverage. The Mashpee zoning ordinance has quite an extensive personal wireless services bylaw, and within that bylaw, the applicant always strives to meet and often exceed the criteria and values that are contained within that bylaw. In particular, to note about Mashpee's bylaw, I would note that they have in the preamble to the bylaw pertaining to wireless facilities, a provision that states that any decision by this board must not be contrary to the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. As I may allude to during the proceedings and as is in the written submissions to you, there is an overarching federal law in play here, and certainly I can go into detail about what that means, but in this case, you have the federally overarching Federal Telecommunications Act, and you also have your own ordinance itself, which says it must not act contrarily to that law. Even more specifically, the Mashpee zoning bylaw states that a decision of the planning board must not have the effect of prohibiting wireless services. And from a legal standpoint, what that means in the first circuit courts where we sit in Barnstable County is that if there is a wireless service provider, and in this case we have not one but two, with a significant gap in wireless coverage, and there's the only feasible location to place that facility as being proposed, then the board may not deny such a request. Now, that is the case law in this jurisdiction. But importantly, in January of two thousand and nineteen, the Federal Communications Commission, who overrides the interpretation of the TCA, has issued a voluminous order, which I'd like to submit into the record at the conclusion of tonight's hearing, which states that that effective prohibition standard is just outdated, because these days, we don't just use our wireless devices to make a phone call. We use them for much, much more. We use them to run medical operations and consultations with our doctors. We use them for data. We use them for new and evolving technologies that is still not even on the market now. And so what they said is, forget effective prohibition as we used to know it. If a decision would materially inhibit any provision of any wireless service, not just cellular data or cellular service, then that board must approve the facility. This is the operative law regarding the review of the technical data, which you will see in just a bit. There is a longstanding history here, which I have been privy to during the course of the proceedings before the Cape Cod Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, of a serious issue with service in this area of South Mashpee. And as you can see from the materials and as I've detailed, the technical review has been lengthy and has been extensive, and for this reason, we would submit that we would ask the planning board to approve this special permit this evening. I'm going to turn the floor over to Jesse Marino of Proterra Design Group. He is the projects engineer, and he is going to walk the board through some of the specific site design details. At the conclusion of that, we're going to have the radio frequency engineer for both Verizon Wireless and T-Mobile give a brief presentation. And then finally, we have Mark Corente, who is the author of the report on what effect, if any, this facility would have on property values, and he's going to discuss and brief his findings. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over.
Madam Chair, members of board, my name is Jesse Marino. I'm from Proterra Design Group, site engineer for this particular site. As was stated by Liz, the facility is located at the location of the Mashpee Fire Station Number Two on Red Brook Road. It's on a thirty-acre parcel that's shaped, basically a triangular shape here.
Are these plans all in our packet?
These plans should be in your packet, yes?
Yeah, they are.
I'm on page eight-two, if you'd like to follow along.
So many of them.
What the applicant's proposing is a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot monopole tower located here at this location. The location utilizes the existing paved access driveway for the fire station with a small one-hundred-and-forty-five-foot extension off of that driveway to a hundred-foot by a hundred-foot lease area, inside which there's a seventy-foot by seventy-foot compound consisting This zooms in a little bit here. You can see what I was talking about, we're utilizing the existing paved access back behind the fire station that's located here. There's about a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot gravel access drive here we're proposing. This is the area of what we call the wireless compound. Within it, there's spaces for the carriers to locate their ground equipment. Currently, T-Mobile and Verizon have small areas located at the base here. Zooming in a little further, to our right here is an elevation of what the tower looks like. It's a monopole, which is basically a faceted cylindrical-shaped steel structure, one-hundred-and-fifty feet tall, at which there are rad centers, which are leased by the carriers, which they put their antenna and radio equipment at various levels. At the base, they're supported, this is a plan view here, at the base, they're supported with ground equipment here. The ground equipment within the compound doesn't require water or sewer. It's basically, what needs to be fed here is telecommunications and electrical from the street.
Can we ask questions? Wait till they finish?
Is that a wait?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, fine.
Around the outside of the facility, there's a chain link fence with a gate. It's pretty gently graded here, about three percent cross. It's pretty gently graded here, about 3% cross-pitch across. We have a gravel verge filter strip here, which we're proposing for a little bit of stormwater management. Very low and pervious here. It's all disconnected impervious area, there's no big parking areas or anything like that. Traffic here, you're talking a few trips a month per carrier. It's a remotely monitored site, so occasionally a tech may come and work on some of the equipment here. So it's pretty low impact as far as that's concerned. Understanding a little bit more about the two carriers and what their equipment is, on the ground, there's a couple refrigerator-sized pieces of equipment. They're basically metal cabinets that house some of the power and telecommunications equipment. They're also proposing a propane-powered generator. This is the event of a power outage, that the facility can still run on backup power. This is Verizon's typical equipment here. T-Mobile is similar. They too have ground equipment, little bit different shape, but very similar. They're also proposing a generator that's on propane as well. As far as disturbance, you're looking at about 1% overall of the overall 30-acre lot, so it's pretty low impact. This location has the effect to limit clearing because, again, we're utilizing these existing corridors here to bring in our utilities and access to limit the clearing here. So we've been able, inconsistent with that RFP, to be able to do that. As was stated, around it, we're kind of in a wooded area here, so there's existing vegetation on these three sides, and this side here is shielded by the building here, so there aren't great vistas from the road here to be able to see the equipment through the woods. There's no trash generated, there's no water or sewer. It's basically dry utilities and remotely monitored, as was stated. That's really all I have in my overview. I'd love to take questions if you guys have any.
On that pole that you showed, how come you didn't show the five carriers that could be there? The monopole. You only showed three. I mean, so the other two would be lower than that?
So there are these two carriers at the top with known equipment. We have T-Mobile and Verizon. These are the other two carriers that you're talking about here.
You said there may be three more carriers.
Including the town.
Oh, including the town, okay.
Yeah.
Another question on that.
Sure.
You have a fall zone. Where's the fall zone? I don't see no... And how far is that property to the nearest house behind it?
So this is an illustration here, kind of the overall. So the closest residences are, I believe, in this area here, yeah. So here's where our tower is here. This circle represents the fall zone. So the fall zone is contained on the property.
Yep.
The closest building is the fire station. The next closest are the homes in this area.
So...
That's off of Blue Castle Drive. So Blue Castle Drive is here.
Those are the ones behind Blue Castle Drive.
This is Red Brook here. DeGrasse is over here.
All right, so the fall zone is not in the fire station, right?
No. The fall zone's contained on the property.
I was thinking, though, if you had a big windstorm like a hurricane, the antennas could fall more than 150 feet right on top of the fire station, I would think.
No, it's farther away to the fire station in the height.
Okay, all right. All right, so that's the only question I have for you. For the part you have, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, back to Elizabeth's statement. Possibly you could, while you have the picture up on the screen, you mentioned a hardship, that it falls into a hardship, part of the permitting that you qualify for, the permitting as a hardship. I just don't understand that. Can you elaborate?
That's really a provision of the variance criteria, so that really isn't the issue before this board. That issue has been decided by the zoning board of appeals. So for a variance under Massachusetts state law, one of the criteria is that you need to prove a hardship. And in the case of a variance, the necessity for this tower, that variance was found.
And could it be revealed?
Certainly. A significant gap in wireless coverage is considered a hardship under the Telecommunications Act of 1996. In addition, often in the case of a wireless facility, the topography will determine, always will determine, the necessary height of the facility, and that is considered a hardship.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Thompson some questions?
Well, I would really like them to, if you can, just put your questions in the parking lot and ask them all at once. This is such a unique situation for us. I'd like the project proponent to complete their presentation.
Okay.
And then go through our questions. All right. So I'm going to recognize the project proponent again. If Mr. Monterio, is that your name?
Marino, sorry.
Marino, sorry. If you're done, I'd have your next person come up.
Sure, we're going to have Keith Valente from C Squared Systems. He's the radio frequency engineer on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
Are these the ones that are in our application or the ones that were sent as revised?
This is not revised, but it's a compilation of everything that's been submitted. So the original package was the original propagation maps, which are included here. As a result of the commission proceedings, there were additional plots requested by the expert. So we wanted to make sure that this board had each plot that has been part of the record thus far in the proceedings.
All right, I'll ask that again. So I can't see this, right, because it's behind me. So I need to know where in my application I can find it, in the original application?
The supplemental.
The supplemental.
Are they not colored?
They're in color. See, actually, they're in color. They're sorted by the agenda.
He's helping me find where it is.
My name is Keith Valente with C Squared Systems. Business address is 65 Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless to explain the need for the proposed site with respect to their wireless network in the area of Mashpee and the surrounding area. So what we have on the display here are the maps that were prepared as part of the application throughout the Cape Cod Commission and the zoning board as well. And I can quickly run through those to explain the need of the site from Verizon Wireless's standpoint. So the first map that I have displayed is effectively their existing coverage in the area, and I can briefly explain the zoom in the map and where the sites are located. So if we can start in the left, there's a site labeled East Falmouth. That's over near Mahoney Gardens Center by the recycling center. It's a monopole that Verizon's located on. Looking north in the upper-left-hand corner of the map is a site labeled Falmouth Two. That's on the south side of the Cape Cod Fairgrounds area. It's also a monopole structure similar to that's proposed at the fire station here. Moving into Mashpee is a site labeled Mashpee South. That's on Industrial Drive. That's a lattice-type structure that Verizon is located on. And there's also numerous other sites that are outside the zoom in the map, but we're trying to focus on the area of southern Mashpee. In blue is a site labeled New Seabury on Red Brook Road. That's the location of the proposed facility. We have a scale bar in the lower right-hand corner, that's one and a half miles for some of the roadways. We have Route 28 running from the left up through the center and up through the top of the map, Red Brook Road across the center of the map, Great Oak Road, and Great Neck Road running north-south as well, and the pop and esced area over by the shore. What's shown in the green irregular coverage areas, or green areas, is effectively the coverage, reliable coverage provided by Verizon's existing facilities. So large portions of central Mashpee are served by the Mashpee South. The two Falmouth sites are providing some extent of coverage into town, but there's a large area in the southern part that, just by the nature of the topography, the distance of the sites, and the land cover, they just don't provide reliable service to that area. So in order to build out the network and provide a more continuous footprint, an additional site is needed, which is why we're here tonight. So if we can go to the next map, which is labeled Detachment B, that effectively shows how the proposed site would improve coverage in southern Mashpee and better fill out the area, provide more services to any subscribers in the area, and create a more competitive network for Mashpee. Those two maps effectively show what many of you folks may traditionally see, the coverage of the before and after. But as I'm sure you're all aware and many yourselves may have, you probably have multiple wireless devices. Many people have cut the cords in their homes. I think over 50% of the homes now in the country are wireless-only. So it's a more indispensable part of our daily lives. So with that usage, the networks have to support additional capacity on their networks. So the next set of maps helps show, what do those existing sites cover today? So the Mashpee South site in particular, what we've done here is highlight in red, the southeast-eastern-facing sector of that site, what it covers. And in orange, facing to the southwest, is the area that that sector covers. Additionally, the southeastern-facing sector in yellow is shown what that site covers. And again, in southern Mashpee, you have lots of erratic coverage, and this isn't necessarily reliable, it's a less reliable threshold. You know, there's some marginal coverage getting in there, it's just not continuous and it's not reliable. And there's a lot of users in this area, and because they're located out on the fringe of the coverage, they actually put more of a capacity burden on the networks than users located closer to the sites. So from a performance standpoint, what we show in the next map, what we're showing here in green is effectively what the footprint of that proposed site would cover. And as you can see, those orange, red, and yellow areas kind of shrink. So the burden pushed on them is lessened. They're better suited to cover the users closer to those sites. And users down in southern Mashpee are effectively offloaded to this new site if and when it were to be built. And it provides a more robust network overall, not just in southern Mashpee, but allows those other sites to better serve their areas elsewhere in the network. The next map is a 3D terrain map. Now, all those irregular coverage patterns are largely defined by the topography of the area. Hilltops and valleys are going to define what those coverage areas are, depending on where a site is located. And you can see, you know, the Mashpee site sits up at somewhere around 50 to 60 feet, and then you have the topography dropping off certainly towards the water. And then right around with the site is, you have these sporadic hilltops, and that's what creates that irregular coverage, where it skips and comes back and so forth. So it's not a really reliable... You know, once you get further away and you have these topographical obstructions, it just breaks up the coverage, which is another reason we need the proposed facility. And that's the general need from Verizon's standpoint, and I can be available for questions when the time comes.
We're now going to ask Ricky Karyuki. He's the radio frequency engineer for T-Mobile.
My name is Richard Karyuki, and I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. I am a radio frequency engineer located at 15 Commerce Way in Norton. I'm here to show what the site, the new site, the proposed site in Mashpee would do.
It's in this packet.
Yeah, I got it.
Right, I'm sorry.
So what I have right now showing you is existing coverage, T-Mobile coverage. And if you can see upfront, we have three existing sites showing coverage in green. And as you can see at the bottom here, this is where we lack coverage. T-Mobile doesn't have any coverage, the southern part of Mashpee and New Seabury area. This site is located at the industrial park at a height of 165 feet. 511 is located at Farmough Highway at 93 feet. And 550B up here is located at Thalia Road at 130 feet. So when you look at that, you're showing what we have for coverage for T-Mobile right now. So the gap here is what we are trying to cover with the new tower located here, Seabury. So this next right is showing us a proposed candidate at 101 Red Brook Road at 135 feet. As you can see here, this is the new location, and you can see we are able to provide coverage on Major Road, Red Brook Road, and most of the Seabury area. So if you have any questions or anything I missed, please let me know.
Am I killing you, Dennis?
Yeah, you really are.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, I can ask you a question. So that white area is still not going to get covered, then?
Yeah, part of the white area, you know, at this location is not going to get coverage, but at least we're getting coverage, at least 90% of the Seabury area. But in future, you know, we can be able to provide, you know, with new technologies, you know, down in Seabury area. But, you know, at this location, we're able to cover New Seabury, the objective, almost 95%.
All right.
And finally, we have Mark Corente of Fair Market Advisors LLC. He's the author of the report contained in your packet. I believe it was submitted in January, and his report is on what effect, if any, this proposed site would have on property values.
On the table of contents, which exhibit it is?
It is not contained in the original packet. This was prepared as a result of concerns expressed by the butters in our original Cape Cod Commission hearings.
Do they? They do, okay. I saw that. Members of the Board, Madam Chair, good evening. Before I introduce my report, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Mark Corenti, I am the managing member of Fair Market Advisors, Hollis, New Hampshire. I am a real estate appraiser, licensed real estate appraiser in the state of New Hampshire, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I also have a broker's license as well. I've served on my town's conservation commission, so I know what it's like to go over technical data this late at night. So, what I would like to do is highlight my report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them regarding that. Now, the question before you this evening is if granting the application, would it cause any diminution of value in surrounding properties? And the way an appraiser will measure value, I'll give you an example. If you have a house that has, let's say, an in-ground pool, what is the value of that in-ground pool? So, you take that home and then you compare it to a group of other homes that are identical except for an in-ground pool, and if there's a difference in value, you can attribute that to that variable, which would be the in-ground pool. So, if these homes, the home with the in-ground pool is selling for 360 and a preponderance of the other homes that do not have it selling for 350, you can attribute that $10,000 pot to the in-ground pool. Now, I'm not saying that in-ground pools are worth $10,000, but if you can understand the statistics behind it, that's the crux of the report that's going to be in front of you. Now, an appraiser does not determine value. An appraiser will measure value. I might have an opinion regarding cell towers, you might have an opinion regarding cell towers, you might hear opinions this evening regarding cell towers, but the one who is going to make that determination for you are the buyers. Buyers are the market makers. You may feel strongly about your home or the features or anything that you've put in your home, but if someone's not willing to pay for that feature, then you don't have the value. Buyers are the market makers. So, in turning to that, I have researched sales in Mashpee. The question, again, before you is what would the granting of the application do? Would it impact values in a specific neighborhood? Well, there are cell towers in Mashpee, so the easy answer to this is to analyze those neighborhoods and look at the health of the neighborhoods and look to see how the cell towers have impacted that. There's a neighborhood called the Highlands. My report addresses four sales in the Highlands. I've also included two in Oxterville, I'll get to that reason why I included that. It is page 10, I'd like to call your attention to page 10 of the report, and if you don't have it immediately in front of you, I'd be happy to bring up the item here. Okay. This is 9 Nancy Drive. It's 879 feet from a cell tower. You can see a white mailbox to the right, that's the driveway to 9 Nancy Drive. You can see the view shed that it has. Page 11 itemizes that sale. 9 Nancy Drive listed for sale for 374, 900, and it sold for 370. That's a 99% list to sales ratio. It sold in 43 days. Now, what of that? The line above on page 11 tells you what had occurred in Mashpee during the same time period. Your median sales, excuse me, your median list price in Mashpee was 369 at that time, and your median sales price was 357.5. Homes were selling at 74 days during that time period. So, as you can see, 9 Nancy Drive sold above the median. Now, comparing 9 Nancy Drive to other homes that are identical, they listed for 339,450, they sold for 327, which is a 96% list to sales ratio, it took them 87 days to sell. Basically, the study repeats this exercise. The next one is on page 12, it's 12 Windmere. This is a photo that I took of, from 12 Windmere. You can see the tower right behind it. 12 Windmere listed for 289, it sold for 252.1 in 88 days. Its peers, homes that it directly competes against with regards to size and age, listed for 254.9, sold for 245 in 83 days. That's page 12. Page 14 discusses 114 Dover Road. 114 Dover Road is the Cape on the right, you can see the cell tower on the left, I hope that you can see it. Page 14, 114 Dover Road had an in-ground pool, so in apples-to-apples comparison, you're going to compare it to other homes that have in-ground pools. So, 114 Dover Road listed for 369.9, it sold for 360. Other homes with in-ground pools that are similar in age and size listed for 354.450, they sold for 359.950. There's a $50 difference there. And the last one in Mashpee I wanted to bring to your attention is 2 Oxford Shire. And this is a photo that I took, I was standing at the corner of 2 Oxford and Dover Road. You can see the cell tower above the trees there. Again, listed for 374.9, sold for 370, sold well above what its peers were competing against. Now, this is one specific neighborhood in Mashpee, and the reason why I went to Barnstable is because I wanted to touch upon a different price point, and I'm sorry, I don't have that photo here, but I do want to call your attention to page 18, and I do want to mention it. Admiral Way is directly across the street from a 150-foot cell tower. I drove that neighborhood this afternoon, I took a picture with my cellphone, if you do want to see it, I can get it up here. 10 Admiral Way listed for 849, and it sold for 815. 11 Admiral Way listed for 849, and it sold for 835. It sold in six days, that's on page 18. Based on the data, this is what buyers are paying for residences, and as you can see from the photos that I put up, these residences have a view of a cell tower. Again, you might have an opinion, you might hear opinions, I certainly might have an opinion, but the one that matters is the one who put the money down says, "I like the house, I'll take it, I'll buy it, and I'll pay this amount." At that point in time, the market has spoken. Might you have any questions?
Dennis, do you want to start?
No, I like to start questioning.
That's your last presenter, right? Yeah, okay. Dennis, do you have?
Those pictures you showed?
Yes.
One of them was 800 something feet, the tower was away from that house?
Yes.
So, if I was in my yard, probably couldn't see that tower, there's trees in my yard, and they see the top of it. But the new on Red Brick Road, how far is the tower away? It's only like 200 feet or 300 feet?
You know, that's a good question, and the best that I can determine is it's going to be about 400 feet to the closest house. Now, to property line, it's 211 feet. To closest house, I would say it's a little bit over 400, and again, that's the reason why I went to Oxterville, is because those two...
Oh, that was close, okay.
Yeah, they were closer.
That's when I was one way, okay.
Yep. And again, because the others are further away, I wanted to share with this board what the view shed was. I assume that you all could see those towers from those comps.
All right. And now, could I ask Mr. Thompson? Okay. Let me see, wait a minute, I've got my glasses here. One of the reasons that I thought why the cell tower really couldn't go there, because it wasn't zoned for R3 district, have we changed the zoning on this piece of property yet? I don't understand how could this still go on?
Sure.
When we haven't changed? And if we didn't, I don't know how you could bring this back, because by law, I say you can't bring back a zoning change for two years once it failed.
No, see, this, a personal wireless service facility is allowed in the R3 zoning district. What isn't allowed is the height. So, that's why we sought a variance, once it was determined that it was outside of the wireless overlay district. So, the use is allowed in the R3. The height, we could not meet the height criteria. If we were in the overlay, the planning board would have had the opportunity to waive the height requirement up to 200 feet. Being outside of the overlay, we didn't have that choice or that opportunity at our disposal, so we sought and received the variance for height from the zoning board of appeals.
So, that, another one is we're near the wildlife sanctuary, and I thought it had to be 300 feet. They couldn't put a tower with the 300 feet of the wildlife sanctuary.
The NEPA review was done in coordination with the federal authorities in wildlife, and we are actually not in proximity to the wildlife, but we are in a boundary acquisition zone, which means they could approach the owners of that land and seek to acquire it. However, the architectural, historical, natural preserve, habitat folks, all through the Cape Cod Commission process and the National Environmental Policy Act concluded this tower was permissible under all of those regulations.
All right, but when the Cape Cod Commission looked at this process, they weren't aware that it wasn't zoned for there. Never mind about the federal act, but when they were first looking at this...
They did not make a determination based upon it being in the wireless overlay. They believed, based upon their analysis, that it was.
But it was wrong, they were wrong.
However, directly in their decision, you will see that they stated that that's irrelevant because it isn't allowed use in the R3 zoning district under your ordinance.
It isn't allowed?
Correct. It is. It is an allowed use by special permit from this board.
Okay.
I just want, we don't have to debate opinion.
No, okay.
You know what I mean, that's her opinion.
Well, it's clearly in the table.
I'm talking to Dennis, please. So, I just, just...
One more question.
Yep, yep.
You talked about hardship, and you said you didn't have to tell us where, you're supposed to look at the whole town to see where this could go, and I don't understand why you can't say, "We looked at New Seabury, but it wouldn't fit there."
We did.
We looked at this, and how come we can't see that?
We can certainly go through that. We conducted, meaning the client, Blue Sky Towers and the carriers, an extensive alternative site analysis. We examined properties within a search area. So, what happens is a carrier identifies a significant coverage gap. In this case, we have two carriers who have identified separately their own coverage gaps. Once that gap is identified, the site acquisition specialists for the companies get on the ground and they look for viable properties within that gap. If there are properties that are even minimally viable, they're run through the radio frequency propagation modeling that you've seen on your screens tonight to determine if they'll work. We have examined many, many properties. We have a table conducted in the application which has 40-something sites. I can attest to you that many more than 40 sites were identified and ruled out. There is not one feasible alternative to the proposed site that the applicant or the two carriers were able to identify.
I don't understand, though, that, where we have that tower, where we have that tower, we have a tower that's like two and a half miles up in Industrial Park, so you're going to get double the coverage right there. But I live down right at the end on Whippleville Circle, and if I go on the beach, I get coverage, I have Verizon, I don't know why anybody else though, but I get coverage. But if I'm on the beach and I go to Red Brick Road, it's 3.3 and 1/4 miles, but I've seen on the plan you're showing us, we're not going to get some coverage on the beach, even with Verizon, and some coverage on Pop Inneset, so wouldn't you be better to push the cell tower down further?
There's a few. Madam Chair, I would request, I would request that we remain some...
We'll run out of time if we do that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't kill that, because I got trouble when you clap on me, but...
I would also request the opportunity to be heard without some, a name going from the audience, Madam Chair.
I just covered that.
Thank you.
I'm asking serious questions, I mean...
So, there's a few answers to that question, it was a multifaceted question. Number one, the scientific data, the radio frequency data determines for the individual carriers what area they need to cover. Now, as the name might infer, this is a network of cell sites, meaning that one, one site is never going to cover 100% of an area. All of these sites, as the radio frequency engineers explained, they work together as a honeycomb...
Right.
...to close these gaps. So, is there an area along the beach that is not covered by this proposal? We can see the white, yes, you're right, it will not cover 100% of that area, but that's not the target, they're not trying to cover 100%.
Well, that's where I live, down there, that's, people complain.
Of course.
When I'm on the beach, I can't get covered.
Of course.
Lady the other day said to me, "I ride my bike and I fell off here, and I couldn't call anybody. What do I do?" She was mad at me because, whatever, but I says, "Y'all come to the meeting and state your facts."
The carriers are working to close all of those gaps, the one that they are targeting right now, you've seen on the radio propagation maps. Now, instances of an individual board member or an audience member stating that they have coverage, they have this carrier, it might work here, and they might have this carrier, that is not scientific data. The data which shows you what the coverage analysis is, is on that screen and contained in your packets. And this is data that has been verified by an expert in this field and also has been upheld by the courts in the First Circuit as the standard for determining whether there is a significant gap in wireless coverage.
I believe there is a gap, and we do definitely need cell tower, but, okay, I'm answering my questions.
All right, and, you know, there'll be plenty of opportunity for additional ones if you think it's enough. Joe, would you like to go and ask?
Yeah, just a couple of simple ones. I agree with Dennis, I think that the cell tower should be moved closer to the ocean, but that's something else. I get concerned about the backup generators. How many backup generators will there be? Three, four?
There's only one being proposed as part of this application.
I think there's two during the presentation.
T-Mobile and Verizon.
Yeah, each one has one.
So, there is one being proposed as part of this application, Verizon Wireless. In the future, T-Mobile may want a backup generator, should Carrier 3 and 4, they may want a backup generator, that's really up to the individual carriers, and at that time, they would have to go through the proper permitting, you know, per the jurisdiction for that backup generator.
Well, I was concerned with having four or five backup generators running at the each individual...
Propane.
Sure.
Each individual carrier would have their own backup generator, which doesn't...
There's a potential for that, but right now, there's just one being proposed. And I would note that the sound study that's contained in your application materials, because that is a possibility, and we wanted to make sure that we covered those bases, that sound study contemplates four generators at the site and still shows that the sound would be well below the allowable noise pursuant to the bylaws.
There was something, I was... You said you've looked at, you reviewed all the sites within the area?
Correct.
And you've looked at New Seabury for...
Correct.
And the golf course?
Correct.
The driving range?
Correct. There was a site, and I'm sure this will come up, there was a previous site in New Seabury at one time.
Yes, there was.
Yes, of course there was, and Verizon Wireless had a lease with that, with that particular site. Those leases, that lease was terminated by mutual agreement of the parties before this RFP issued. Prior to the RFP issuing, the Verizon Wireless re-approached New Seabury Country Club to see if there was any interest, and the answer was, there is not interest. As such, that is not a feasible alternative to this proposal.
I, you're going to have a ti, you're going to have time to use the mic, and in fact, I'll give you plenty of time, because you're always yelling out comments, so don't worry, we're going to get to you. Are you done?
I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Weed.
One of the maps, I'm not clear as to, you have various types of coverage. The Mashpee South on Attachment C Verizon sheet, it shows the, a difference between the Mashpee South Tower providing beta coverage on one side and gamma coverage on the other I don't necessarily understand the difference with the same tower.
So, which carrier are you?
On Verizon's sheet, Attachment C. Attachment C, yes.
Okay, sure. So, what this map shows is, instead of the reliable coverage where all the sites provide it, what we're showing here is on that particular facility on Industrial Drive, which is labeled Mashpee South. I guess what I, maybe would have been helpful if I explained is, you see, if you see that each site consists of three wedges, so the majority of the sites for Verizon Wireless have three sectors of antennas, you know, pointing in different directions to cover all around the site. So, that's, that's what those wedges represent. So, on that particular site, you have a sector facing north, one facing southeast, and then one facing southwest. facing southeast, and then one facing southwest. The southeastern-facing sector, the area that that single sector covers is shaded in red. And then the orange represents the area covered by the southwestern-facing sector. So the purpose of this map is to show that that's the nearest site. It's about 1.4 miles away. So any kind of intermittent coverage that is getting down there is from that site, and it creates an additional capacity burden on that site. So in addition to improving coverage, what we show with Attachment D in the green, that shows where the proposed site would kind of, you know, be the, what we term a best server. The, any users in the green area would be communicating with the proposed facility. So it provides more robust coverage in the area, and it also allows that Mashpee South site to kind of relax what it's trying to cover. And it's more efficient. It allows that to handle more capacity to users closer to it and offload the usage in southern Mashpee onto that new facility.
Another question was the... Thank you for that answer. That did help. So down in New Seaberry, the Rock Landing Site seems to be at 60-foot elevation. It seems like a high point there off of Rock Landing, shown in yellow on Attachment E. Do you have the analytical data that shows why that site wasn't chosen, or if there was any property that may have proved useful in that area highlighted in yellow at 60-foot elevation on Attachment A?
Oh, never mind. Got it. So just to be clear, the, see my pointer? I don't know if you can see it. That's, that's the area you're speaking of.
Yeah.
All right. So my understanding is Verizon did have a proposed facility there. So technically, I don't, I'm not suggesting it wouldn't work. I believe the issue there in terms of overall feasibility was, was just being a willing landlord. There's more elements in the real world than just whether or not it works. It has to be leasable, constructable, and all sorts of issues.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was looking for the presentation of that information to show why it was ruled out and why it didn't make the cut. Because you made the statement that all, all areas were explored and, and, you know, there was a hardship.
Well, the hardship issue is separate, so I want to keep that separate. But really, as far as feasible alternatives go here, the area in New Seaberry and throughout New Seaberry was looked at and looked at initially because it is central to the gap. However, as Keith intimated, if you don't have a willing landlord, you don't have a feasible site. And there were no feasible sites of suitable size, suitable topography with a willing landlord anywhere within New Seaberry.
I hear you stating that, but the, I was looking for something to show us that, where you vetted that out.
So in your package, you do have an alternative site analysis?
Exhibit 11, David, in the, in the big application.
And I do recall there are some areas on Rock Landing Road that were contained in that analysis.
Ms. Jamie, can I ask a question?
So on the last page, there was one area on Rock Landing Road owned by New Seaberry. There's 1, 2, 3.
Is that the last page?
Yes, the last page of the alternative site analysis. One is Map 116, Lot 74A, commercial property, 24 acres. It's the same zoning relief as the proposed site, and it was deemed outside of the search area. One at a 111 Rock Landing Road, also outside of the search area, would not close the coverage gap in the same zoning relief, and the same for that third location. The Country Club location is not contained on this. However, as explained, that was clearly not even one we had to put on this list as it was not feasible with an unwilling landlord.
But there were all three commercial properties that aren't viable for, because of landlord?
In these, this table indicates it was not feasible for radio frequency reasons, that they weren't going to, to complete the same coverage. I can't attest to, you know, I don't have, we haven't run radio frequency maps here for you tonight for those particular, particular lands.
I mean, because it only makes sense because it is a higher elevation, that it would have a broader coverage area. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not claiming to be a, you know, an expert at this, but based on elevation, the, the carriers all buy to have the highest location on the pole.
Sure.
And then it diminishes, diminishes as it goes down. So it seems though elevation is a key factor. So that's why I, I'm looking at that area.
Yes.
Because it is further out closer to Popinessa, and it's the highest point in the area.
Yes.
Where the commercial properties, it seems as though, you know, they'd be able to work something out.
Sure. And certain, certainly, fortunately, it was not able to be worked out. Again, there was a lease between not Blue Sky, my client, but from what I understand Verizon Wireless and New Seaberry, and that lease was terminated. And when re-engaged, they were not interested in pursuing a lease with Blue Sky or Verizon Wireless for a wireless facility. The site acquisition specialists were able to identify no alternatives. And, you know, through our research and review with the commission and with the clients, we found no viable alternatives with a willing landlord of sufficient size that can, can complete the significant gaps here.
Dennis, did you want to?
Yeah, this, you said before, you kind of stated that regardless of what we do, the federal government can step in. So why can't the federal government step in on Rock Landing Place if that was a better thing?
Well, we have to do our job. We have to show you that there's a significant gap in wireless coverage, and we have to show you that there are no feasible alternatives to what we're proposing. As far as the research and due diligence that we have done, we are maintaining that that is true for two wireless service providers. Again, that technical information is in your package, and it has been reviewed by a wireless consultant.
All right, thank you.
Can we go back to David?
So again, with the issue with elevation playing a factor to the monopole and carriers, the image that was on the, on the presentation up on the screen reflected, I think it was mentioned, or it was stated, it's a 150-foot pole. But in the packet, the information in the packet, the Fair Market Advisors packet I was looking at, that reflects a 200-foot monopole. So there's a discrepancy between, that's shown on Page 8 of the Fair Market Advisors. That pole reflects a 178-foot monopole. On the, what's before us on the permit application, it says 150-foot monopole.
Yes. What is being proposed and what has been approved for height and by the Cape Cod Commission is 150-foot monopole. If this is showing 180, that's, that's incorrect.
So with 100...
Less substantial.
So with 150-foot monopole, T-Mobile's presentation seemed to show that once you get below 135, the 135 feet, the coverage greatly diminishes. So my question is, has AT&amp;T or Sprint, have you been approached by AT&amp;T or Sprint to solicit any additional placement of their antennas on your pole below the 150, they go in 10-foot increments?
Yes.
So you're at 140, and then the, the town's equipment's at 100. So you left 120 and 130 available. But have you been approached by Sprint or AT&amp;T for...
So just for clarification, Verizon Wireless is 146. T-Mobile would be 136. We would have 126 available, the towns at 100, and perhaps 96 for the fourth carrier. As part of the Cape Cod Commission process, we are required to reach out to all licensed carriers. So in as matter of course of business, the client reached out to both Sprint and AT&amp;T. There's no firm commitments at this time. Typically, I can attest to that where there's a coverage gap for one, there's usually a coverage gap for all four of the major wireless service providers. We have nothing concrete that they will locate on this tower once it's constructed. And yes, you are correct that, you know, the lower the antenna slot, the, the coverage will diminish. But with an existing tower, that's still a viable opportunity for a wireless carrier to close at least a good percentage of a gap.
So we may be approached in the near future to put up a second tower?
I certainly can't attest to that.
By another carrier.
However, I can tell you that with the existence of an approved tower, the chances of that are greatly reduced. And the expert, the expert report by David Maxon of the commission attest to that, that with this tower, we certainly can't guarantee that the other two carriers will come, but we can attest to the fact that, that it's more likely that they would co-locate at a lower elevation on an existing tower than spend the resources to build and permit a second tower.
Yeah, I just beg to differ only because T-Mobile's report shows like it greatly diminishing once you get down that low. It didn't, it didn't seem like it covers the area in New Seaberry that's the target demographic.
Right. And again, elevation as it lowers will never cover the same geographic area, but these are business decisions made by the carrier. So, you know, with rent differentiations and an existing tower and not having to construct their own steel, I can attest to the fact that once a tower is built, it's very typical for it to be fully loaded with four carriers, knowing that the third and fourth carrier are going to have diminished coverage from the first and the second. And again, those carrier needs and networks are all unique. So Verizon's coverage, as you can see, is not the same as T-Mobile's, is not the same as Sprint's and AT&amp;T. So based upon the technology they use and the, the licenses that they hold and the bandwidth they're using, that coverage proliferation is going to differ. So you may see someone 10 feet lower have the same coverage. Again, those are, you know, technical, technical data, but this is, this is how the industry works.
Last question. Aren't all the carriers required to have a backup generator for their own equipment? I thought that was a requirement.
It is not a requirement. It was looking like it was going to be federally mandated, and at this time, it is not a federal mandate for them to have backup power. You will, Seaberry will always do that. T-Mobile, I believe, is using backup batteries? Yeah, at this point, they're using backup batteries, which is sufficient for backup service, but not quite the same as a generator.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, just for my edification. The proposed coverage, wireless coverage area, how many residents are affected? I think somebody alluded to about 85% would be covered by the proposed increase of wireless area. But how many houses are in this coverage area that you're, or homes, I should say? Anybody? And is the percentage of coverage, 85% as stated, or, you know?
Regarding the percentage, I don't, I don't believe I made that statement personally, but I think I can answer your question. In terms of, so we, we ran an analysis based on the 2010 census data to get, I mean, it's an estimate as best we can, depending upon the census blocks and how large they are in the coverage area. And if we... If you toggle between Attachment A and B. So if, if we're to just can only consider the area, the, the white areas, the non-green areas, so we're effectively disregarding any, any homes or people that are already covered, and we look at Attachment B. So will we consider incremental or additional coverage? Our calculations show about, based on the US, 2010 US census data, approximately 1,400, what we call pops.
Okay.
Residents. In terms of structure, the Mass GIS has a database. It doesn't guarantee it's a home. It could be a pool house. It could be a detached deck. But in terms of structures, we calculate 2,300.
So 60% of the structures would be covered? 1,400 units or...
The 1,400 was in reference to population, so 1,400 residents, based upon that census data.
1,400 residents.
So 1,400 people.
And, and what percentage would they be covered or not covered by your proposed tower?
Depends what that, we're, we're comparing it to. The 1,400 is additional people that are not presently covered today that would receive adequate coverage with the proposed site.
Right. Out of a population of how many?
Depend, are we talking the town, or?
No, no.
The country, state?
Of, of the area that was originally in white.
Oh, well, yeah, I don't, I don't have that percentage.
Or let's say the area that's still in white.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have that percentage. I just have a number of what, what the proposed site would cover.
What, what the additional coverage would cover, 1,400. So you want to give a, an estimate based on the white area and, and all those little streets down there?
If I could do it in my head, it would make my job a lot easier, but I, I couldn't.
My, my estimate, a lot of the green, new green coverage area is rural, wooded, undeveloped area, except for the high-density area where all those streets are. My estimate was your improved tower, or your proposed tower, would probably cover 50%. It's, that's not a good batting average.
I, I couldn't agree with the 50% at this point without writing the numbers. I think comparing Attachment A and B, I mean, it's, it's quite an extensive gap. It affects a number of people. The topography of the area is, it's, we're not going to find a site that covers everything. That's just the way it is. We can't do that.
But most of that white area, existing white area, is unpopulated by dwellings.
Well, I think everything east of Great Oak Road is, is pretty well, pretty well developed with homes. Sure, there's the bird sanctuary directly to the south.
But looking at the concentration along the coast, where all the streets are, cottages and homes are, versus in the area of the fire station, too. I, I know that the Newcastle and Blue Castle or whatever is, is right up there, and that's heavily populated. But most of that wide area is quite rural, except for the beach area. And you're covering a lot of trees, but not much speech.
Well, we're covering, we're, our calculations show we're covering 1,400 people.
Which is...
1,400 structures.
1,400 people.
People in that area, based on...
It's not summer/winter population. With, summer, we have like 30,000.
Well, the census data is based on wherever they're registered, so. So certainly in the summer, it's going to be, there's going to be more.
But, yeah, it's going to be higher density, density along where that high-density streets are. And they're not going to get coverage.
I think as Mr. Valenti stated, this is, this is not, this is not a circumstance where 100% of an area is white. This is why we have various cell sites that work together to close all of the gaps in coverage. And again, in regards to the areas that are sanctuaries or wildlife or not heavily populated, we still have people who travel these roads, who hike these fields, who go and look at the birds, and these are all areas that per the FCC licenses need to be covered. Because there aren't residences there, don't make them important, doesn't mean emergencies don't happen there. Again, 1,400 people, 2,300 structures is a significant amount of people to be covered that are lacking service altogether.
I couldn't agree more with you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, we need to take a short break to move our public hearing that was supposed to start at 8:30, maybe 9:30.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or?
Yeah.
So, B?
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're going to wait for Dennis to come back.
Yeah, you can take those, I have those copies in the record.
You have them already in the file.
So I'm going to try to be really quick with my questions for the project proponent, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So Section 174-45-3 of our bylaw is the Personal Wireless Service Facilities bylaw. Section H of that is radio frequencies, radiation, RFR standards. So in that section of our bylaw, it requires in any application for approval of a personal wireless service facility shall include documentation that the FCC guidelines are being met. And a copy of the letter of approval by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health required by 105 CMR 122.000 is submitted. So I think I saw the FCC documents. Does this application include a letter of approval from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health?
It does not. That 105 CMR 122.000 is no longer good regulation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it is no longer required. I'm happy the Board of Health for the Commonwealth has a document on their website, which states as such that this is no longer required. I'm guessing this bylaw was drafted when this was still operable. If you would like, I could certainly print that from their website and email it to Evan, so it's part of the record.
What I'd rather have is something saying that 105 CMR 122.000 is no longer in effect.
Specifically requiring the submission of a document in regards to a personal wireless service facility. I don't want to attest that the entire code is not in effect, but that requirement specified in H is no longer applicable.
Okay, so that's a yes, you'll provide me with some type of documentation, that's no longer, okay. Okay, also, in our bylaw, it allows the planning board to require that the applicant fund the services of an RF engineer to review the documentation regarding the FCC guidelines. So I didn't know if the planning board is interested in that.
If we want to hire a?
Yep.
Consultant.
Yeah, and it's... The sentence says, "The planning board may require that the applicant fund the services of an RF engineer to review the documentation regarding the FCC guidelines."
Yeah, I like to say that because it's by grade. You know, I want to make sure we're talking about all the i's and crossing the t's.
Okay.
What is the RF engineer? Is anyone familiar with that?
Number one?
I've never heard the term.
It's defined in our bylaw.
RF engineer?
Radio frequency engineer.
Radio frequency.
Yeah, radio frequency. Whether it's a health asset or?
He's just an independent radio frequency engineer, all right.
The FCC guidelines. So Evan, will you look into that for us?
Sure.
So we got revised photographic simulation package. And these were a result of the balloon test. Do you have those?
I do.
If you could go to page 10. Well, it's my page 10 printed out.
Chairman, I just want to note to the board, the revised photo sims that were provided to you in a link, but I couldn't print them on our printers here today, so I have to find an alternative and provide them as hard copy in a future packet.
Is it this one with the monopine behind the?
Yes, okay. So 10, page 10, 17, 18, 25, and 26 shows monopines. So have you submitted the plans for the monopines to this board?
We have not. A little bit of history here. So originally, a monopole was and continues to be proposed in part because that is the preferred type of telecommunications tower under the town's bylaw and under the Cape Cod Commission regulations. So we were going with what was preferred by the jurisdiction. In the proceedings before the Cape Cod Commission, we started to discuss some design alternatives, which in the end, the Cape Cod Commission decided that this was really not a decision for them to make. And they were happy to see that we were willing, we have submitted that we're willing to certainly explore design alternatives with the board, with the town. So we originally had prepared a set of plans showing a monopine. If and when this becomes an option that the planning board is seriously interested in, we can certainly have copies of those plans submitted. However, you know, we'd certainly like to hear some feedback first from the board, whether this is something that they're interested in, as the commission deemed this, you know, not the most attractive option for Cape Cod.
So in the decision, it talks about deferring that decision to the planning board.
Correct.
On their website, it has the engineered plans.
Right.
So I'm going to request that you submit those to the board for consideration.
Sure, absolutely. While we're on the topic of photo simulations, two other designs that were explored and are contained within your packet are painting the tower. So some jurisdictions like to see the tower painted a light blue. I think it blends in better with the background. And some jurisdictions have requested and approved a light gray painting of the tower. Again, these design alternatives are completely subjective and vary from town to town. You know, there certainly are places where a monopine seems to fit in and reduce visibility, and there are other places where it just doesn't make any sense. But again, that is up to the planning board. And as the representative of the applicant, we, I think the most important thing to say is that we're willing to explore any of those options which would be approved by the board.
In the series of photos, does it have the two colors?
It does, it's going to be very difficult to see with this projector. But let's see.
There it is in the center.
There's the balloons.
Here, I believe, I can't see.
That's okay, it's in the package which we have, which some of the members have not received. That's just, that's fine.
It shows the alternatives painted a light gray and a light blue from all of the areas where the tower is depicted.
Okay. In your application for the special permit, you reference responding to a request for proposals issued by the town of Mashpee. Would you provide this board with a copy of that RFP?
That is not something I'm able to provide, but certainly the board could request from the select board a copy of that in town council.
Can you request that, arrange that for me?
That's something would have to come directly from the planning board to the select board.
I don't think so, I would like you to request that.
We would perhaps be able to request that, but really, this is a matter that's not before the planning board. That's something, if there's a question, I would suggest the board ask town council.
It's referenced in your materials. I need to see that document, can you arrange for that?
I certainly could request a letter from town council submitting that there is a signed lease document as a result of a request for proposals, which is a public document, which I'm sure the board could request from town council or the select board.
So you don't have that in your documentation in your office, you don't have the RFP?
I do.
Could you please provide me with a copy of that?
That's something that's between the select board and the town. I'd certainly broach that with the select board.
It's public information?
Correct.
I'd like you to present it to us.
Do you not have a copy of that, Madam Chair?
I do not.
Okay.
So are you going to provide me with a copy of that?
I'll have to discuss that with my counsel and with town council, and suggest that you will not request it from town council.
You don't get to talk to town council.
I certainly can make public requests from town council, thank you.
You go to the town. Nobody gets to directly talk to town council. I don't get to directly talk to them, so please don't refer.
I certainly can request town council, whether they provide that to me or not is up to town council.
Okay. Now this is where some people, this is where it starts to get a little confusing, because the bylaw, as published at the time of this application, did not correctly reference a town meeting vote from 1998. So bear with me. So the Mashpee zoning bylaw was corrected by the town clerk's office on December 20th, 2018, to correctly reflect a 1998 town meeting vote defining the wireless facility overlay district. To read regarding R3 and R5, that the wireless facility overlay district shall include... dot-dot-dot, all other land in the town which is not located... dot-dot-dot, within the R3 or R5 zoning district. Okay, so per the application for special permit, the proposed site, just I want you to confirm, that the proposed site is in the R3 zoning?
Correct.
You have that listed. So do you agree that this proposed site is not in the wireless facility overlay district?
As I stated in my opening, I clearly agree that it is not in the wireless overlay district, which is why we sought a variance and received a variance from the zoning board of appeals for height on February 12th.
Okay.
Excuse me, 13th.
So in your, in your application, you, it's several places, referenced the wireless facility overlay district.
Sure.
Especially in Section 5, Satisfaction of the Standards for Wireless Communication Facilities.
Sure.
Are you going to update the application?
I can certainly update the application, I think it's sufficient with my testimony, as the one requirement that changed was the need for a variance for height, which has been properly applied for and obtained.
So could you put that in writing for us to update this application?
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you. Okay. I see that this is referenced, this correction of our zoning bylaw. I see that's referenced in your December 28th, 2018 letter to the planning board, which I submit to the public record. Along with what I'm going to submit to the public record is also the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals decision for variance V-2019-10, and a notice of complaint filed in Superior Court against such decision for the variance.
Those are included in previous packets, and also in your packets tonight.
And I might not submit it this minute. Do you have a copy of that?
Yep.
So there was a zoning board of appeals decision, it's been appealed to Superior Court. Do you have those, Evan?
Yeah, Derek, so you had two packets, last week's packet and this week's packet. It was in the packet for the April 3rd meeting. Jen, you had?
So here it is. Both documents together. Okay, I would also like to enter into the record the Town of Mashpee Annual Town Meeting Warrant and Report of the Finance Committee, where Article 14 proposed the amendment to the zoning bylaw to include the proposed site of 101 Red Brook Road, Assessor's Map 104 Block 2, into the wireless facility overlay district. I'd also like to submit what I received from the town clerk, attesting that Article 14 did not pass by town meeting, it was defeated. The board referred in June of 2018, the board referred this proposal to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. And that decision was issued on October 18, 2018. I note that the review of the Blue Sky Towers DRI application for cell tower at Mashpee Fire Station Number 2 by Isotrop Wireless dated 8/10/2018 states, quote, "It is not clear why the applicant asserts the facility is in the Mashpee Wireless Facility Overlay District. Additional evidence is recommended, as this affects the required findings of the commission." In the DRI decision dated, I think it's October 18th.
That's correct.
Yep.
2018, the Cape Cod Commission finding F25 states, "The project is consistent with municipal development bylaws." They were told that the site was in the overlay district. This finding was based upon correspondence from the Town of Mashpee stating the project was in the wireless facility overlay district. However, we now know that the project is not located within the wireless facility district. So I just want to ask the project proponent, did you notify the Cape Cod Commission that this change occurred?
Yes, the Chief Regulatory Officer, John Idman, is completely aware of the fact that it is not in the wireless overlay district. In fact, it's his determination, I believe it's stated somewhere in the decision, that, and in many conversations I can attest to personally that I've had with him, that that is not determinative or fatal to our project, as this is an underlying allowed use, and that the only meaningful impact, that determination, which I know you've submitted the documentation, but we've already agreed that it's not in the wireless overlay district. The only thing that changes is the fact that we needed a variance for the height of the facility, which has been applied for, obtained, and approved. The pending litigation in Superior Court, we'll have to wait and see what the outcome of that. I won't speak to the pending litigation, but as far as this board is concerned, the approved variance has been granted by the Town of Mashpee.
Okay, don't run ahead of me. I got it all here. All right, so do you have correspondence between?
I believe it's contained right in the decision, he states that it is allowed.
Afterwards, was there notification given to the Cape Cod Commission, and was there correspondence back?
That is not necessary, they are perfectly aware of the fact that it is not in the wireless overlay, and that it is not necessary for approval of this project.
An opine, an opinion from town council regarding this matter weeks ago, however, I have not heard back. So if it's okay with the board, I'm going to write this up to the Cape Cod Commission and submit that request.
Yep, all right.
I am not going to go forward with something that should be referred to the Cape Cod Commission and isn't, because that's just going to mess everything up. Since you've had the conversations with them, I'm sure that it's going to work out good for you.
Of course.
Okay, I'd like to put into their official record, the Cape Cod Commission Regional Development of Regional Impact Decision dated 10/18/2019. Attorney Patrick Costello, he's our town council. September 24th, 2018 email regarding the cell tower Mashpee Fire Station, which states that the project is in the wireless overlay district. That was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. It's unclear to me if town council ever corrected that opinion. There's also, just to be thorough, Town Planner Evan Laers' memorandum from August 21st, 2018, submitted to the Cape Cod Commission regarding the Development of Regional Impact referral. And lastly, I believe Isotrop Wireless was hired by the Cape Cod Commission to review your application.
Correct.
Here's their review, it's dated August 10th, 2018. Review of Blue Sky Towers DRI application for cell tower at Mashpee Fire Station Number 2. So these are all going in? So these are all going into the public record so that we can talk about them, we can refer to them. You can go to Evan and ask him for copies. All right. All right, good. I'm sorry, I have like two and a half more things. Okay. On page nine of your application, it discusses the visibility camouflage of the personal wireless facility. What is the height of the vegetated buffer surrounding the proposed monopole? Have you, have you measured that?
The existing trees?
Yep.
They're, I'll let, I'll let the engineer verify.
I knew one of you guys would have measured that.
It was 55, I think it was 55 feet, but we'll let the engineer. That specific question, too, was asked by the building commissioner as part of site plan review, and I sent him an email documenting the engineer's finding on that. I do have a copy of it somewhere. If I can find it, I'll submit it. If not, we could certainly.
That would be great, because that's my next, you're going to tell me the height, and then I'm going to ask for it in writing, just because it's, it's actually something we have to, it's, look at because of what's written in the bylaw. If you don't have it, if you would submit that, that's great.
Yeah.
And then on page 10 of your application regarding lighting and signage, have you provided an engineered plans showing compliance with Section 3A? Talks about having a plan showing the candle foot measurements at the property line shall be 0.0.
There is no lighting proposed for this facility.
So there's no lighting that's going to trip on sensor? No, no sensor light?
There may be on the equipment cabinets, but there's no lighting that would require any review per the lighting standards.
Okay. I don't know if that's on, is that on your plans, the potential site for?
I don't believe we're showing a sensor light when the construction drawings, if the facility is approved, would show that level of specificity and conformance to any lighting requirements. But the tower is not proposed to be lit, and there are no equipment shelters proposed at this time, which would have, you know, a larger sensor light.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For answering all my questions and being so patient with me. I am drafting up a list of documents and working with the planning department to make sure that everything that's been submitted by the public and myself and anybody else is on an official list of documents, so we keep track of everything. Okay. So now I recognize the town planner for comment.
I just want to, I suppose, note the applicant's correct assertion that personal wireless service facilities are in allowed use in the base zoning district, and it's, it's the height that is the ultimate consideration, and why the, the location of this proposed tower required the variance because of the initial assumption that this was located in the personal wireless service, or, excuse me, the wireless facility overlay district. It's not the, the use that's the prohibition, it's, it's, it's the height. The wireless facility overlay district allows the towers up to 100 feet, and the planning board, if granting a waiver to that tower, can grant up to 200 feet. Because we are obviously not within the wireless facility overlay district, the applicant sought variance, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and this application can be reviewed on its merits in the residential R3 and R5 districts as allowed uses by special permit in the base zoning district. The, the other items I wanted to know just from the zoning bylaw, because I'm certain that they're going to come up in public comment, are specific to health impacts, public health impacts as a result of radio frequency emissions. And in the zoning bylaw, I just want to note a few items as you listen to those comments. First, this is in 174-45.3, Personal Wireless Service Facilities, in the preamble, Section A, Paragraph 3. Last sentence, furthermore, this bylaw may not regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the Federal Communication Commission's regulations concerning such emissions. The, the, the technical RF reports that were submitted by the applicant may be reviewed by a consultant if the planning board so, has so chosen. I'm going to be looking in that, into that for you. So as you consider public comments, just keep in mind that the applicant in their application has submitted documentation that they have met those FCC thresholds, and you cannot base any decision on radio frequency emissions. Further, another note from the same paragraph, that the administration of this bylaw shall not be undertaken in a manner which unreasonably discriminates among providers of functionally equivalent services, or prohibits, or has the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. So I just want to note that we received an application that shows the correction of significant coverage gaps. They received a variance for the height that prohibits the, the, the tower from this parcel, so we're reviewing it as, as an allowed use within the base zoning district by special permit. And I believe that, and that's all I wanted to note. One, one item to note from plan review that came up in Charlie's report, that I'm sure he'll note, is that the plan shows overhead electrical wires bringing power to the site. Plan review has requested that the applicant bring those utilities underground.
That's in Charlie's report?
I believe it is.
Okay. Well, let's go to Charlie.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I have a couple of questions of Ms. Thompson, if I may, and then I have a couple of questions of Mr. Marino. Ms. Thompson, in your opening remarks, you said that the, if the project is in compliance with FCC regulations, then it can't be overridden by a zoning bylaw. But you weren't implying by that, that compliance with that portion of the zoning bylaw that does not be, is not in conflict with FCC regulations, just still have to comply with. Is that correct?
It's a little bit of a, not quite the characterization I made. So certainly, the zoning, the applicant has to comply with the zoning bylaw. There, and the TCA on its, on its face says that the municipality does retain local control over projects to an extent. When that extent is breached is in the circumstances that I described, which is, well, now there are several. One is, if there is a significant gap in wireless coverage, and there are no feasible alternatives to that, that gap, then the local control is preempted by federal law, and that decision must be approved. I do want to submit this FCC order into the record that I listened to earlier, so I can...
Do you have a copy for the file?
I'll make a copy.
I can certainly submit additional copies.
If you have it in digital, to copy Liz, you can send it to me.
Sure, absolutely. That'd be great, yep.
The basis for my question had to do less with compliance with location, or the fact that there is no alternative, but more to do with the details of the site itself. So that if there were issues that came up as a part of my review that suggested that maybe I didn't find the information, or that it was not compliant with the regulations as they are written, and they apply to the site itself and not to the coverage or anything like that.
Sure.
That, you're not saying that compliance there is not required.
We would certainly work to comply with any technical aspects, sure.
I just have a question on the plans that were shown on the screen. They're basically the, the site plans. And I wondered if there's been any changes since April 30th of 2018? Because when I looked at the close-up of the site on this set of plans... Keep going.
Sorry, the screen's a little...
Okay, that's, that's a good one right there. If you look at the area of the plan that's to the right of that red dash line, I think it was mentioned that the enclosure is 70 by 70. That certainly doesn't look like it's 70 by 70. However, my plan suggests that it could be 70 by 70. Is that a distorted view, or have been some changes made?
The compound is 70 by 70. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that's what's...
Just a distorted view, yeah.
In other words, the, the screen is not spreading it out?
Right.
Horizontally the way that it should?
The proposal is for a 70 by 70 compound.
What are the dates on your plans, if you could just check them? That's different than the plans that I have. My plans only go to 4/30/18. So I'm wondering if there was a change there. Could you look on your plan and just see whether or not it's a rectangle, or whether it's a square?
It's a square.
Okay. It just doesn't show there, that's all. In your report, and it's been alluded to a couple of times, that the metal cabinet's not going to be encompassed within a housing facility, that you have no plans to build one. But that's part of the zoning requirement. Why would you not have to request a variance for that if you're not going to supply it?
An equipment shelter typically is much more obtrusive design than equipment cabinet. This results in less impervious area, less disturbance of the land. It's actually a reduction in the build-out.
Isn't that, isn't that subjective? It isn't, that's what the requirement says. It should have a story.
I think the requirements are for if you are proposing an equipment shelter. I don't believe that there's anything that requires an equipment shelter to be built.
I believe it does.
And I, I can't imagine that a jurisdiction would prefer to have, you know, more disturbance of the land area in a more obtrusive building design than...
The zoning bylaw.
We can refer, we can refer to it, but I'm pretty sure that's a requirement.
All right, I, I've left my zoning bylaw with all my stickies in the...
We could certainly look into that and put forth a memo, but again, if that, if that was something that was going to be determinative of a zoning approval, while I can't speak for my client without saying, I certainly wouldn't think that that was something that we could not accommodate. But again, this is a much less obtrusive design, and, you know, as industry standards go, I've never seen a jurisdiction who doesn't prefer it.
If it's just by law, you don't even...
It certainly does. The planning board is entitled to waive certain provisions under your bylaw as well. So again, this comes down to what makes no sense for the site and for the land disturbance, as well as, as design.
I would question that statement that the planning board has the right to waive a zoning bylaw. It does if it's stated.
Under the personal wireless service facility.
But if, if there are other portions of the zoning bylaw that require a certain thing, and it not stated that within that section of the bylaw, the plan, planning board has the ability to waive that, seems to me that that is a variance requirement, if you're not going to do it.
There is a provision that allows, under the personal wireless service facility, to waive certain provisions, like in loci...
I know, I know it had to do with the height. I'm, I can't speak for the rest of it.
Yeah.
But that's certainly something that should be looked at. Bear with me just for a minute. Yeah, this is, with respect to equipment shelters, it talks about it in Section 174 45.3, subsection F-2. So I'm pretty sure that's, that's pretty specific as to what it says there.
I would maintain, and again, I can put this in writing, equipment shelters for personal wireless service facilities. This section contemplates what is required if an equipment shelter is being proposed. It does not mandate that an equipment shelter must be proposed. It says, "Equipment shelters for personal wireless service facilities shall be designed consistent." We are not proposing an equipment shelter of any kind. We are proposing a concrete pad with an equipment cabinet on it. No equipment shelter. Therefore, I would render it not applicable.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to...
I would like to read you that.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. There are some other details I don't think I need to bore the, the board or the public with some of the other things that have to do with details of the site itself. There's something that I think could be, do you have a copy of my report? Does anybody on your team have a copy of it? Do you have any, can you supply that?
Pass that down.
A lot of it has to do with, as I say, structural details of the site.
Yep.
There is one aspect of it that I didn't see that was required in the bylaw, and that had to do with a profile. You did provide information on a limited profile of the tower and the, the screening around it, and the height of the trees. Give me just a moment to find that in my notes, because it was a requirement in one particular section. Talks about before and after photographs, which you have provided. And that is in 174 45 3H 2I 2 and 3. However, there was a requirement provided before that, that, that said you needed to have a profile. And that profile had to extend out into the areas where, of, I think, at least 300 feet. And it had, basically, it showed the profile of the ground and what you would see from that distance in a profile view. And in that information that's in your plans, I didn't see that particular section.
Okay, well, that is something we would certainly have to review and get back to you on.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I apologize if you didn't get that beforehand, but yet, basically, would like your, your team to review Charlie's letter and respond to all of it.
Those are the, the two basic things with respect to the zoning bylaw. There were a lot of other things. We talked about the, the clearance and so forth for overhead electric line, which apparently is, is taken care of, so we don't have to worry about that. Again, the other details I had with respect to the site itself, I think could be questioned, taken care of quite easily, once the applicant sees what I put in the letter for the details of the plan.
So I'd, I'd accept a motion to allow Charlie to work with the party proponent to address his report, the items in his report?
So be it. So be it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then we'll need your most up-to-date plan. After, if anything changes with Charlie. It sounds like there's, I don't have your most...
I think you have it. It probably just wasn't provided to him.
Yeah.
So I have, what's, what's the revision date?
Mine was 4/30/18. That's the last date that's on this plan.
Is that, what's your last revision date?
1/18, 1/8/19, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't have that. I mean, I have the, I have the original package from like beyonds ago.
Right. There really have been no material changes, but we'll certainly make sure that copies are available for...
Yeah, that's great.
That's all I had.
Okay. So, I'm going to now open it up to the public for comment. We have a new setup. Normally, I wouldn't ask you to move, but I think I do need you to. Usually, we have two mics, but we're going to have to share. So the chair now opens up the public meeting, to the public for public comment. Just want to remind everybody, when speaking, be kind and considerate of your neighbors. We have already been yelled at, this board has already been yelled at once, on a continuance day. You weren't, the party proponent wasn't here. So, just please be as respectful as you can. I know that it takes a lot to come into this building and get up on the mic. You're videographed, you're in front of everybody. Have no fear, we're going to listen to you. Try to keep your comments concise and to the point. If you start to take an unreasonable amount of time, I will ask you to wrap up your comments within two minutes. Okay? And if anybody, for any reason, feels uncomfortable about getting up to the mic, please submit your comments in writing to the planning board staff. So that's, that's our town planner. Please do not, you know, give him verbal comments, that doesn't count. It has to be in writing. I'm, I'm sure if anybody's shy about writing, he can even help you with that. But we want to hear from you. Okay. So anyways, first, I'm going to ask for comment for people who support this proposal. So please come right up. I, I want it, I want to take at this moment, time to let you know that we have received, I believe, four to five written comments in support of the proposal. So I don't want you to think that there aren't people in the community that support it. There are. Is there anybody that's neutral, that just has a general question about the project? So your name, your address, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Sharon DiFrancesco, 80 Situate Road. I don't have a question. Many have been answered for me this evening, which I was grateful for, but I would like to read, if I may.
Yes.
Every discussion of cell towers should first point out the absurdity of the fact that in California, firefighters can refuse to have a cell tower placed at their station on the basis of the documented health concerns it poses, yet no one else, not police officers, not employees, not schools, not families, none of these groups in California or any other state can say no to a cell tower. That fact alone should have this entire nation in an incredulous uproar. Instead, we blindly accept the federal overreach, an attempt to prevent a cell tower by some other means, nearly all of which have also been weakened by the TCA of 1996. It's an assault on multiple levels and should be considered a crime. We here in Mashpee have yet another reason to be angry about a proposed cell tower. It is painfully clear that the process since 2017 has been less than transparent. Did Blue Sky Towers independently choose the Red Brook Road site? We're told they looked at over 100 other sites, and we're told that this particular plot of land, which just happens to be town-owned, will get the job done nicely, which is great. The rental monies will come in handy, no doubt, as will the $100,000 they are including for our fire and police departments. That sweetens the pot nicely, I'm sure. Yet in the next breath, Blue Sky Towers says the tower won't quite cover all the area of concern that's lacking signal. That will require additional hardware, which, incidentally, I did not hear mentioned this evening. Will this hardware have generated backup so it's functional in a storm when the need is greatest? It must, mustn't it? Otherwise, it defeats the whole purpose of bringing coverage to our southern neighbors. Here's another question. Why all the confusion over the residential and wireless district maps? Why have any, why have any maps or laws at all? In this instance, they seem quite superfluous when it comes to what certain people and entities want and don't want. It would be comical if it weren't so disturbing. So truly, it should be a surprise to no one that more than a few residents are unhappy with the handling of this tower project. For the record, nearly everyone involved agrees that there is a need for improved wireless coverage at our southern end. That need should be met in the most efficient way possible while adhering to at least some of our existing laws. Hearing the deep concerns and skepticism of Mashpee residents, especially a butters, while handing the key to the town over to Blue Sky Towers is bad optics at best. Let us stop, take a breath, and take a more measured, open approach to this project. I thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. And, under two minutes, that was great. Hi, Lynn.
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I definitely want improved cell service, but, and I did my own little test, well, two weeks ago, driving down Great Neck Road South from Red Brook, because I spend a lot of time at the beach, and I have been very concerned about safety at the beach. And as the slides showed, the slides that they had showed, and my own personal test about how many bars, it is quite amazing that there's very little on Great Neck South. But once you go down the road to the beach, we have that tower from East Falmouth, and it does cover the beach, as their slides have shown. So that was a big relief to me, that, one, the beach is covered, and that they have confirmed that, and I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, I think it's safe to have anybody else come on up, you know...
Good evening. Kyle LaBelle, 56 Tracy Lane. This is probably Charlie's expertise. We've got 150 feet up in the air. Has anybody considered how much is down in the ground? And has a groundwater impact study been done? Because as we know, single-source aquifer Cape Cod, everybody's worried about groundwater. Next thing I want to know is, it's on town-owned land, and as you know, in Falmouth, they put up wind towers that are not in use now. As was stated tonight, as technology gets better, this may become obsolete. Who is gonna be on the hook for taking this thing down 20 years from now or whatever? Is the town, or is Blue Sky, or is Verizon? It may be a big bill to take this thing down. Thank you very much.
So if Blue Sky would like to address the impacts, the potential impacts on groundwater? I think his question was, you know, does it go into the ground, and what's the impact of groundwater? I do want to, there is a piece of the bylaw, while the engineer gets ready, there is a piece of the bylaw that talks about coming back and reporting to us in five years or something like that. That would probably be a condition of any permit, and I think that could be addressed, whether the tower is still in use at that time. But I thank you for that comment. I thank you for that comment about who, if it becomes, you know, it's on-town property, if it, for some reason, is not used in 10, 15 years, what happens?
Yeah, well...
Okay, you can...
Well, I think Charlie's going to, he's addressed that.
Oh, okay. Put the lights out.
He's addressed that. Which, eventually, with your dealings back and forth, I think you'll, you'll agree with this. Charlie has a section, abandonment and discontinuance of service.
I could certainly give a brief answer to that. It's very clear.
The very brief, brief answer to that is that the applicant, Blue Sky Towers, per the lease with the town, is responsible for taking that tower down if it's not used.
You have to post a bond.
There's also a provision in the lease which allows the town to charge Blue Sky and take it down themselves if it's abandoned for a period of time, so there are safeguards in place to protect against that.
Well, I was just, I read Charlie's thing, and I knew that it addressed that issue, so...
Sure. We'll respond in writing to that report as well.
It does, in that particular section, it does, it says the planning board has the authority to require a suitable bond for the removal of the structure. If I may, just reply to the question a gentleman asked about groundwater. I think there is something in the report, and I can't go to the page off the top of my head, where it was mentioned that groundwater is 40 to 50 feet down. I don't know how accurate that is, but I suspect it's deeper than where their foundation would be. This being a, considered a structure, I think, under the building code, probably has to have certain foundation design that's done by a structural engineer and be certified that it's capable to withstand wind loads and all that sort of thing. And I suspect that's part of the design consideration that would have to be submitted to the building inspector at the appropriate time.
Real quickly, I'd agree with Mr. Rowley. Typically, these towers have a foundation below grade. Typically, they're spread, spread mat foundations, approximately 20 to 25 foot square. They are considered a shallow foundation, and they'd only be about five or six feet deep. As far as water resource findings, this was studied by the Cape Cod Commission as part of the regional impact. That's on page 11 of that document. And I would, I would point the board to their findings there.
So my whole big plan about having people of some opinion come up as a group and not, and then the whole, that failed. So that experiment failed. So I'm just gonna open it up to anybody who wants to come up in support, opposed, or neutral, or just asking a question. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair and the planning board members. My name is Teresa Ronhawke. I'm 82 Sunset Circle. I also, we also own the property at 104 DeGrasse Road. So one of the main concerns, as an abutter, of this property is that we will experience unfair financial hardship from this, from having a tower placed. I know this gentleman from Blue Sky Towers has talked about properties that, surrounding a tower that exists in an industrial park that was, was there when the property was built. But I have a study here that was done by the, there's several studies that have been done, but this one was done by the electromagnetic health organization, and it's, the question was, do cell towers impact property values? And they surveyed 1,000 people. And this was, this was reported by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Policy. They surveyed 1,000 people, and they asked these people, would you buy property if there was a cell tower? Would that affect your, your interest in a property? Would it affect your, the value that you would pay for a property? 94% of those people said that a nearby cell tower or group of antennas would impact their interest in a property and what they would intend to pay for that property. So the study goes on to say that 88% said under no circumstances would they purchase property that was near a cell tower. So the study goes on to talk about what the reduction, what they predict the reduction in property value would be. And they say for, show that prices would be reduced 21% after a cell tower was introduced into a neighborhood. And so they're showing that it would dramatically affect the property values. So this is a financial hardship for the people that live there. Now, when we went to, when we were at the Cape Cod Commission meetings, we requested a professional abutters report be done, and we were told that that was not necessary. We had a professional abutters report done ourselves, and there's about 166 properties that would be affected by the introduction of the cell tower at this location. And the study, the study that, the professional study was based on the appraisal's journal and reporting done by the National Realtors Association. And I have studies done by the National Realtors Association as well, and this was published in the New York Times about reduction, 79%. They also surveyed people, and 79% said that they would not purchase property that was near a cell tower, and they would be expected to pay a very reduced property, a reduced value in the property. So this prop, the cell tower being located at this location would present a financial hardship to the, for the residents in this area. And we're talking, as I said, about 166. But it's also, would cause undue, undue stress to the families of these people in this area. Financial hardship is equal to financial, to stress to families. And now that you've introduced the isotopes report, I would like to reference some of the reporting in here by Dave Maxim that was presented to the Cape Cod Commission. So one of the things he says is that, in the report, and I'm sure you've read it, but is that they have not, Blue Sky Towers has not identified, distinctly identified, a coverage, a coverage gap. It's a coverage problem, and according to the Telecommunications Act, they, they're requiring that coverage, a coverage gap as opposed to a coverage or a capacity problem. And in David Maxim's report, he says that he's not seeing that that distinction has been made for this particular property. It also says in here, in this report, that this location is at the edge of the intended service area. And he's recommending that a location moved to the, to the south or closer even in the intended service area would be more beneficial. So my point is, is that we're looking at undue hardship for many, many families for a site that is not even going to solve the problem, and it's not even going to, it's not even gonna cover many of the families in Pompanas. A point that we made was that the maps show that a great coverage for a wooded area, but not the coverage for the people in Pompanas in that densely populated area. So we're asking that the planning board not permit this special permit to allow this cell tower at this particular location because of the hardship it would cause the residents in this area, and to uphold the voters of this town that have voted in 1996 to design areas where these cell towers could be placed, and then again, this past October, when we voted not to include this particular piece of property in the wireless overlay district. Thank you for your time.
So you cited some written documentation.
Can I present them?
I'm gonna ask you to submit them. I hope they're not your only copies.
Nope.
Okay. And that way, they go into the public record and...
Are these included in the packet you dropped off to the planning board?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
No, because I, I think that, I think I'd rather you read the written material.
With regards to the property values, I would completely agree, but there are a couple of...
No, I'm not gonna recognize you. You have to just, I don't see a question that I need you to answer right now.
It was misstatements, mischaracterizations, right?
So I'm gonna recognize the gentleman standing.
Mike Ronhawke, 82 Sunset Circle. We also own the property, 104 DeGrasse Road. Could I use the table, please?
Yes.
If you don't mind? Thank you. I have several things. I appreciate your patience, and hopefully, we can get through this. I have several things that, I have some written things that I'd like to submit. I don't know, you want me to submit them first or comment on them first?
You can just, you don't need them to describe them, but then pass them in to the town planner.
Okay.
And speak right into the mic.
All right. We're gonna give it a shot here. Okay. So a couple of things I would like to reference first is that the applicant first referenced David Maxim's report. Specifically stated that, David Maxim said that there was no other suitable sites, that's false. On page seven, he specifically says the proposed site in the southern ed, is on the southern edge of the coverage of the existing Mashpee site, about 1.5 miles to the north, excuse me. Ordinarily, wireless carriers prefer to place the facilities in the middle of the porous service area, which would be on the property that David was referring to, Mr. Whedon, would be where the water department land is. That's basically in the center. He also states that this would be about three-quarters of a mile south of the proposed site, near the intersection of Hus Road and Great Oak Road. So he does not state that, that this is the only site and the preferred site. He also states on the same page that there remains a pocket in Pompanas that would realize substant, no, would not realize substantial improvement in service, proposed facility. Future expansion might be needed, rely on utility poles, rooftop-mounted small cells to provide, fill the coverage gap. Their engineers have already re-edited this. It's been talked about at every meeting, that, yeah, we can't cover it, we're gonna have to do something later, we'll figure it out later. I'm not really up for that, to say, oh, let's build it and figure out the rest later. That's not, that's not how things are done in the modern world. We have engineers, we have people that can figure this stuff out. You don't, you don't build part of it, you don't build something on one side of town and say, we'll figure out the rest later. Let's figure it out right the first time. And he also, he also referenced on the same page that Verizon has not provided, has provided no data on whether the proposed height is necessary. So that's one thing I'd like to address that was spoken about. The other is, the, Evan referred to, let's see, Evan referred to the planning board's 174-45-3, and he referred to the third paragraph about how you're not allowed to make a decision on this. But he, you know, he, what's been oversighted is the very first paragraph in there, and the propose and intent, for the purpose of minimizing the visual and environmental, and as well as any potential delirious impacts on property values, that you have the power to do that, and that is a very, very important part of this that was omitted, I believe. And I think this board understands that. They also have the power to regulate the drop zone height and things like that. One of the, one of the things that have been discussed about this site is that it's minimal impact, and I believe that's, if we're talking about this specific site on that, which I don't think it belongs there in the first place, that is not a minimal impact site. I don't think that's even been addressed to, that site, that particular spot was not chosen by an engineer, it was not chosen by anybody except for by convenience, by someone from the town. These engineers here did not, did not do a research and say, that would be a good place to put it, and went to the town and said, this is a good spot... place to put it, and went to the town and said, this is a good spot for it. That, that's not how this transpired. This was, and, uh, as far as impact on that, that spot itself. If you're talking minimal impact on the woods and area around there, minimal impact would be if the, um, planning board exercised their, their right to lower the drop zone to 75 feet and then put it 75 feet from the road instead of 180 feet from the back of the fire station, and then take another, uh, 140, uh, 240 to 260 feet of woods out to do the utilities to it. Uh, that's not a minimal impact. Uh, that's a pretty major impact. You're actually baking two, uh, entrances to that piece of property. And, um, he also referred to a bond, uh, for the, um, for the taken down of the tower. What about a bond to the damage to the fire department, uh, pound property building this thing? There's gonna be excavation equipment, there's gonna be concrete trucks, uh, workers and all that stuff, try, try, traverse in the fire department parking lot. Uh, I don't see anything about that. If you don't think you're gonna destroy the parking lot, uh, I don't think that's really, uh, a logical decision to think that, that there's not gonna be any damage. As far as this being the, um, the only, um, as far as this research has been done for, um, available properties, um, I'm gonna submit these to you. I believe, I might have already submitted these to you, but I also, I, I put notes on this. This is Exhibit 14, and I think they changed it again, but for the Cape Cod Commission. This is the list of the properties that they discounted, saying for various reasons they weren't viable, um, alternatives. On the left column, you'll see I've noted where they are in relationship to where that tower is right now, i- is proposed. 90% of these are to the north. They're further away, and they're not available properties. Some of them are town land, they're near the town wells. Uh, this list is so misguided, I don't even know the word for it, but it's, why would you look at properties to the north, further away from the expected area? There, there's only about three properties in here that are actually south of that, and the water department land is one of them, and, um, a rock landing road. And in their notes, it just says it's outside the search area. Why is it outside the search area? That's the affected area. That's where you want this coverage is right in, right where that is. But on their, on their, um, on this property search, it says it's outside the search area. So we were looking, what, that mostly to the north to locate it further away? That's the search area? I don't, that makes no sense to me. I just did a quick, I, unfortunately I have one coffee, but I just did a quick thing on the, um, Mashpee zoning, um, the, um, tax maps. I have a list of 22 properties that are in that search zone area, uh, right here. That could be alternates. Maybe, maybe, maybe they're not willing renters, but these properties certainly could be approached and possibly purchased. I don't see that, that, these aren't anywhere on any of these lists, and these are all, I have them by map and page and this property size and a location, so I wanna submit that to the board. Rock Landing Road is included on there, which is a perfect location for it. That was not properly answered. Mr. Whedon's questions, uh, at the end of the questions, the, uh, the applicant referred back to the golf course. He was asking specific questions about Rock Landing. She did not answer those questions. And, um, you know, the, um, the other thing is, let's see, um, the, um, I have these pictures that were not shown up here of, um, of the actual simulation. I, I feel conveniently left out here tonight of, um, the view from the actual homes. I'll hand out these to, I got a picture of each one for. Uh, the first one is from, um, Blue Castle Drive, and, um, there was some question about the, uh, the, um, those pictures in the first place, the scale, um, from the balloon test, they weren't, they were inaccurate. Mr. Maxon questions them. Uh, they resubmitted new ones. I don't know if those were done again with new balloon tests, or if they just, um, you know, kinda just made a new one. Uh, but the view from, uh, it's, um, photo four, page 21, from, um, Blue Castle Road Drive. That, uh, that photo is taken about 300 to 400 feet away from the nearest house. Um, I think the view would be much different if you were sitting on, um, on those people's back porch, 'cause it would be right in the backyard. And, uh, also, the one from 103 to DeGrasse Road, that picture, that photo simulation also, you could keep in mind that, you know, this is all to scale and whatever. You gotta keep in mind that that house is approximately 125 feet from the road. That picture was taken from the road. So the view from that house is much different from that house, especially behind the house. If you got a, you know, 30-foot deep house, and you're in the back, that, that, that view is totally different than what they're depicting here. And I think that if, if any of these board members look at this and sit and picture yourself that's your backyard, that's what you're gonna be looking at from now on. You didn't ask for that. You didn't bargain for that when you bought the property, you've been living there all those years. That's your life savings there. And, uh, for someone to tell you that, that doesn't matter, I'm sorry, but that does matter. And, um, that piece of property specifically, if, if that has to be, if that, if it was only the, the only property that was available, which it's not, um, that, according to the town records, the town record says it's 28 acres. Their application, unless they've changed it, the one that was submitted to the board, uh, building department, which I looked at, was said it was 36 acres. Uh, tonight, they said it's 30 acres. 28 acres to 36 acres, there's eight acres missing there somewhere. So where is the data that says that's the sweet spot on this property? That's where it should go. There's nothing, there's been no input by any of the neighbors, any of the townspeople to say, yeah, uh, you know, maybe we will use that piece of property, maybe we want that, but where should it go? Where's the optimum spot? We brought that up at the Cape Cod Commission, and what we were told was, takes too much time. They don't wanna address it. That's, that's, that's what they said. Well, you have to go back and look, we, we, you know, that just takes too much time. And that was from a member that was a builder. That's on the Cape Cod Commission. He brought that up to, uh, to attention. He said that that would take too much time. I think, um, you know, I, I, I just don't think that there was any thought whatsoever going into this, no consideration for the people that are gonna be abutting this, that have to look at this, uh, that have to deal with it, um, on a day-to-day basis. It was, there's none. I, I see none. I have been to every single meeting. There has been none. The, um, the coverage maps, uh, the other thing with the coverage maps. Now, they showed tonight, I have all the coverage maps from, that was submitted to the Cape Cod Commission. I see one up there from tonight. I don't know where it is, but I don't even know what page it's on. I, I have Attachment A, um, excuse me, it's not Attachment A, I'm sorry. Attachment B, that shows the coverage of Verizon Wireless at 100, at 146 feet, uh, as this was brought up already. Huge coverage gap Pompanas, which is one of the most densely populated area. They showed another map here tonight that showed it completely covered. Where did that map come from? And what map is that? That white area is not there on the, one of the maps they showed earlier. I, I don't understand that.
Those were revised. You have to, you have to go into Evan's office to get them.
Okay, so, so how do you revise your engineering and what changed? Why, why suddenly can it be covered now? It couldn't be covered before. You know, is there some kind of magic formula that they didn't use the first time that they use it now? I don't understand. How can you, how can you revise? You know, these are totally submitted by the applicant, so you just revise it to cover these areas? What, I don't understand. Convenience? What, what is that? The other thing, then, when you look at the T-Mobile coverage map, T-Mobile submitted 1,200 megahertz and 700 megahertz. Verizon only 700 megahertz. If you look at the T-Mobile coverage at 700 megahertz at 135 feet, um, some of the white areas that Verizon sees are there, but some are not. And then they have a whole nother section that is there. Their, T-Mobile is, according to T-Mobile's maps, they're covering the areas, area that Verizon can't at a lower elevation. This makes no sense to me. I mean, if you can explain that, I'd love to hear the explanation for that, because, um, if you can say, well, I've heard that, well, it, it, different companies use different, uh, equipment. 700 megahertz is 700 megahertz, correct? I mean, why, why is T-Mobile able, able to better cover Pompanas at a lower height than Verizon says they can? I don't. This doesn't make any sense to me. And also, um, I see, um, all the mon, most, 90% of Monomoskoy Island is, gets no coverage. I mean, what about those people over there? I, I do see that the wildlife area, which is not populated and never will be populated, those roads that are in there are basically walking trails. Uh, they have great coverage, but, um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't do anybody any good in Pompanas, um, Monomoskoy Island, um, and then the, in the planning board's, um, in, within the planning board's power, it says that, um, that you have to take in consideration is, if, if we override the height and allow something like that, does it preclude another tower being built later? This doesn't. They've already said that, well, if it doesn't cover it, we'll have to figure it out later. Why not figure it out first? And do it right the first time? This doesn't make any sense whatsoever. I mean, I'm sorry, but to, um, as a layperson to, uh, to locate a tower at the extreme edge of the coverage by convenience? By whose convenience? I mean, it wasn't, an engineer didn't survey all this property and say, let's try it right here. That, that, that isn't how this was proposed, that I see anywhere. I don't see anywhere that, that's what was done. That was...
So are you gonna, uh, submit that paperwork?
Yep, I'm right here. Yep. And also, just as far as the monopine design, I have some illustrations of this, that design that they have is, um, pretty horrendous looking, but, and on the back of it, some, um, basically industry standards that maybe you might wanna look at as a, as a, um, as a requirement to make these look, you know, if that comes to that. But I think, um, and the, one other thing I wanna bring up too is, um, and I think, I, I could be wrong on this, but, um, the Middle Class Tax Relief Act of 2012, Section 640, 6409A, um, allows for the extension of a tower by 15%, but not more than 20 feet. So, uh, without, um, public input or town input or regulatory. So what we're really, I think we're looking at here is actually a 170-foot tower, because if you approve a 7, a 150-foot tower, I believe that they have the right to raise that tower by 20 more feet. 20 more feet puts that tower at 170 feet. I believe it puts it, uh, the drop zone in the parking lot or into the building at the fire station. It does. And, um, do you really wanna approve a 170-foot tower inadvertently? Um, you know, because it's obvious that at 150 feet, there, why would a tenant take up the third position there? It makes no sense. If you look at, they've submitted, they've submitted reports at that lower elevation, doesn't do anything, so...
Michael, give Mr. Higginson a chance.
Okay, sorry. But that's what I, I wanted, I wanted to touch on that, and I'm done.
That whole, uh, you know, explanation and all that stuff, you know, you still have time to submit that all in writing. I wanna tag that page when you give it to Evan, but it's double-sided.
Oh, yeah.
You know, one of your...
Oh, on the, with the notes on the back? Yeah.
Can I note something? Not a response to any of what he said, but a procedural item. Uh, some, some of the documents that I'm being handed are, I think, are duplicates of things that have already been submitted to the record. Not everything, but if you, if you're a member of the public and you've submitted items either by email or by mail, or dropped them off in my office, uh, they are included in the planning board's packets, and, uh, a resubmission would be a duplication of the record, so just if you could...
That's it, and you're gonna allow it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I submitted this, that's what, it's, I mean, it was in January.
No, totally understood. So, but, uh, the packet you guys dropped off is, it wasn't given to the board.
But it's also a long time ago, so...
All right, Michael. Is there anybody else that would like to...
Thank you.
If you could come up and sit in the front row, if you're, if you're gonna be there, I'm all, I, you know...
No, I'm fine. Hi.
Hi.
Jen McDonald, 103 DeGrasse Road. I'm at a house at the sweet spot that'll have that beautiful view of this monstrosity if you folks choose to approve it. When we purchased our house there 25 years ago, we never anticipated the view being that. If I were to move to Mashpee today and look through the real estate ads, the first thing I wouldn't look for is, hmm, can I move into a wireless overlay district? But if you put this pole there, that's essentially what's gonna happen. And I truly believe that we are a nation of laws, not men, and we have laws in place. This board knows that this is not a wireless overlay district where this pole is being sought to put. So I would just respectfully ask you to respect our laws that we already voted on, that we already said, and at town meeting, we were very clear, we don't want this there. There are places to put things, and I'm not gonna get into everything everybody else said. There are other places. I would like to see proof, hard proof, evidence, that you have gone to all these other locations that Mr. Ronhock is aware of, and probably more than I'm aware of, and show me, the person who's got the direct view of this lovely thing, show me you've done me due diligence. Show me that my property value is not gonna be impacted by this. You know, I guess that's all I have to say.
I'm gonna recognize the woman that stood up before you. Sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Claudia Fregnito. I'm on 45 Winter Green, and I don't have too much new to say, other than, um, I wanted to echo Dennis's, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce her last name, um, comments on coverage, 'cause as, as this issue came to me, I just, I just found out about it in the fall, and it was, we don't get coverage on the New Seaberry beaches. Well, I've lived in this area for about eight or nine years now. I've had Verizon, I've had AT&amp;T. I hike through the roads, I live on the road, I walk everywhere with my small child, my dog, never once had an issue with coverage. So just, that's a point. I know she doesn't think it's scientific for me to come up here and say it, but I, I live here, so I think that counts. Um, and all I'd like to ask is to think about the people. I mean, this is, this is being placed in a residential area. I luckily am not in the backyard, but I feel for these people who, who, this is in their backyard, and it's just not right. It's just not right. There has to be a better place that can be evaluated, that just won't have such an impact on the people. So I just ask you to think about the people, not the money, um, because that seems to be what's...
Thank you very much. Yep, you.
I'm Linda Lubelsik. I live at 56 Tracy Lane. I would like to say one thing. We aren't, we understand that there is a need. It's not that we are heartless and we think that the people of New Seaberry and Pompanas shouldn't have cell service. We, we know that. The thing is, why do we have to have it? The people, I feel, in this town have spoken. They spoke at town meeting and said, no. And I think a lot of the people, we're not even gonna be impacted by this. And I think a lot of the people were not even gonna be impacted by this, but they realized that this could blossom somewhere else in this town, and they don't want it to happen in their, their neighborhood. You say that, they say that they've tried to put it in the New Seaberry area and they don't have a willing landlord, I believe is the correct term. Well, if the people of New Seaberry and the people of Pompanas really need this service, then maybe they need to get together and say to the New Seaberry, we do need this, we do. And it shouldn't have to be over where we are, we, we don't need it. I just don't think it's fair. I know you're not supposed to talk about health issues. They told us at the Cape Cod Commission meeting that we can't speak about the health issues.
But we can't make a decision based on it.
Right. But one of those houses that they show there, there is a toddler and a baby in it. Do we wait 15, 20 years to find out that something's wrong?
All right, thank you. This is a lady in- Hi.
I have diamonds, channel 108, DeGrasse Road. Dear Planning Board, I'm here tonight to express my concerns with this project. As someone who lives directly behind this proposed location, with babies, I will have to look at this monstrosity of an eyesore daily. Other concerns are noise, vibration, odor, smoke, and flying debris, as I have researched and found these to be some of the issues related to living next to a cell tower. FCC regulations prohibits health concerns being used as a reason for denying a permit as long as it is within the safety limit guidelines, which is already higher than other countries. And I have read reports on radiation rules being violated. I worry that could be another issue here. I suggest putting it closer to the intended area to better serve more of the people who are looking for this service. It doesn't have to and should not be in anyone's backyard. There is quite a bit of conservation land, I feel, should be considered before allowing it in a residential area, also not zoned. I believe the conditions in which the FCC can override local authorities do not exist in this case, and you do have control over a decision. There are many reasons this proposed location should be denied, but the one that concerns every Mashpee resident is that the town meeting process should not be ignored. We voted no. It is the board member's job to support that process. P.S., keep your landline. And here I have 215 signatures, and it is a letter to the Mashpee Planning Board. We, the undersigned Mashpee residents, are opposed to the proposal by Blue Sky Towers LLC to build a tower on Redbrook Road in the residential zone. We appeal to the planning board to deny any permits needed to build this cell tower. Can I submit these to you?
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome. There's a lady standing in the back. Hi.
Hello, Alana Doyle, 148 Sunset Strip. Chairwoman threw you to the board. I am here tonight, well, first of all, I want to thank you for your time and dedication to the town. I know it's tolling being on a committee, but I also want to thank you for your thoughtful questions tonight because it has helped a lot. I am here not because this affects me directly, but as someone whose home is their primary source of savings, it is my primary asset, I do understand what these people are going through. And I can't imagine someone telling me, okay, well, your primary asset is gonna be diminished so people with a second home on a golf course can get better cell service when they don't want this in their own neighborhood. I heard the applicant say tonight that they couldn't get it in, within New Seaberry because there was unwilling landlords. Well, I think that the residents of Mashpee here tonight are saying that they are an unwilling landlord as well. So I just want to recommend that this is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? How about that gentleman that always calls out? No. Put something in, in writing. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. Does the project-
I have a question.
Oh, can you come right up to the mic? Thank you, sir.
I got an engineering question, that's all.
Okay. You gotta, wait till you get up to the mic, 'cause you know, my people at home are gonna call in.
Peter Michelson, 120 DeGrasse Road, 110 DeGrasse Road, and 0 DeGrasse Road. I own the property that's, my neighbor is the fire department in my backyard. The property line that they refer to, that they're measuring off of that, that in their fall zone, that line is not, there is no certified plot plan. That 36, 30, 28 acres, whatever it is, the town got it by, 'cause somebody didn't pay their taxes. The town took it over. When they built the fire department, they had an engineer go in and cut a piece of the property out that they could certify. And now they're doing the same thing. They're certifying this little, whatever size is the property that you want. But they make measurements from a property line that is not on a certified plot plan anywhere. My land that I own at 0 DeGrasse Road is developable. His land is developable. All right? I had proposed, well, three years ago, that I was gonna do 16 one-bed immunities out there in the 40B. One-bedroom condos. Then I changed my nine, 'cause I like my neighbors. But in order for me to do that, I would have to have an engineer take all the deeds, develop a property line, and get a registered recorded plan. So that's an engineering question, Charlie. So that's what my statement was.
Do you understand this question? Okay, good.
What they're measuring off of, they can't prove. So that's what my, I don't know if that's an issue or not, that would get in the-
I'd be okay with Charlie answering that.
I'll, I'll do the best I can on it.
I'm all done, okay?
As, as I look at, as I look at the assessors map and then look at the, the overall map of the area, they seem to be consistent. And I'm not sure what the description for the property is that, that the town has. I assume it's, if it was taken by tax title, it was probably taken by deed description. Probably has the same description as it did before it was taken. The property that I see, that it was carved out of that for the site of the fire station seems to be well within the boundaries, at least the way it's identified on the assessors map and also the map this before you as a part of the application. And the fall zone, the area of the tower, seems to be well within that limit as I see it on the plan. It, it's not a certified plot plan has been suggested because for that particular purpose, so long as it's within the limits of it, and they can, can show that it is, I'm not sure that a, that kind of a plot plan is necessary. It is shown on a plot plan here in terms of the overall site plan. It conforms to standard site plans that you would see for almost any application. So I, I don't know that that's a particular issue. If there is a question about the local, of the actual boundary of the property, and if in the determination of these site plans, they haven't established that in some fashion, then maybe that is a question they could answer for you. It doesn't look to me as if it, it is an issue with respect to the location of the property boundaries.
One more call. Is there anybody that would like to, to get up and say something? Okay. Would the project proponent like to respond to those comments now or later?
Given the volume and the fact that I haven't had an opportunity yet, I believe that I'll put my comments in writing.
Okay. I, I believe Mashpee TV posts these meetings almost right away onto the town's website. And I'll ask Jen to keep your recording available, 'cause we have that backup too. You're welcome.
Ma'am and Chair, if I could just go back to the comment about the, the storage, the house and so forth.
Yes.
I did look back at it in the design standards. It's correct that it is not a requirement that it has a shelter. There are three options. So one of those three options is necessary for the applicant to select. Either the facilities are underground, or they're enclosed within the shelter, or they are somehow visibly screened. So, and, and one of those three, it's not simply there as a suggestion, because under the design standards says, all personal wireless service facility shall comply with the following design standards, and it gives those three options. So if they're not gonna use the shelter, they're not gonna use the underground facility, then they have to show that the visibility has been screened by appropriate vegetation, and it talks about the height and so forth. So I would look in terms of that sort of solution to the problem.
Okay.
So just to clarify that.
Thank you. I, just to recap, just a list, comments that we've received so far. Jerry Lynn, oh, Kalia David, or, or is it Davis? It might be Davis, submitted a letter dated May 29, 2018, that propos, that opposed the proposal. Michael and Teresa Ronhock submitted a letter on December 24, 2018, that opposed the proposal. Michael and Teresa Ronhock on Jan, on or about January 2, 2019, submitted a whole opposition info packet. Philip McHale of 95 Bay Shore Drive in Mashpee, was an email dated April 1, 2019, was in support of the proposal. Emily Hughes, Russell Road, Mashpee, in an email dated April 2, 2019, was in support of the proposal. Judy Kahalas at 2 Bow Sprit Point in Mashpee, submitted a letter dated April 2, 2019, in support of the proposal. So again, I have a feeling that we're gonna continue this to another meeting. There was anybody that was quiet here tonight, or anybody that made comment that wants to provide additional comment, please get it to the planning board as soon as possible. Anybody that's watching this on, you know, Mashpee TV, you're invited, as well as the whole public. Is there any other final comments from board members?
I'd like to get one, clarification from a gentleman talked about a liberty to extend by 20 feet of the height of a tower.
Would you like that reference in law?
Yeah, I'd like to see where that is.
Ronhock, do you have that reference? Can you send us that reference and the-
I have the, I can, I can find it. It's such an, obviously, it's, I know the section in the, in the, in the, in the, in the word.
So is it, is it-
I don't know, I didn't print it, but-
Can, can you email that to, to Evan?
Sure.
Okay.
No, Chair, that's also on my list to read for the board member's boxes.
Okay, good. All right. David, did you have something?
Yeah. I was, I was, when he, one of the gentlemen started to talk about the visual aspects of this project, I looked at the balloon test reports in Section 12 of the application, and what I noticed was on page eight of the applica, of Section 12, the, they show the map with the orientation of where the photos were taken, and some of the arrows are looking in the opposite direction of the actual project, which I don't understand why you would be looking south on Redbrook at the project when the balloon's behind you. So it, it, it really looks kind of wonky on, on, on why they were taking pictures looking south when the balloon's to their back.
Is that the exact reference you're looking at?
So it's page eight on Section 12.
12 of the-
It's the visual impact assessment.
The original submitted?
By Nicholas Avery, which has not been-
Okay, so that is for historical purposes, so, page 12.
Visual, visual impact assessment.
Page eight, he's asking why, why are the views away from the balloon test?
Okay, so that was done by the historical consultant for purposes of use, so I would have to go back and re-identify and get it.
Great.
So the other, the, the other reason I ask that is because you do have a couple of historic properties over there. The Horatio Amis House was built in 1890. That, looking directly behind it, you know, I, I'd really, if you position, I don't know, it's hard to believe that you're not seeing the balloon at all from that spot, because the trees sit back somewhat from the house, so, which would give you kind of a, a good look at the balloon. So, I mean, if you position the camera just right in a, just the right orientation, you might hide it behind one of the pine trees over there. You know, I, I'm, I'm really kind of skeptical that you didn't see the balloon at all from that direction. The other schoolhouse, it's not, it's so dense, the trees are so close to the property that I don't think you would see it there. But the Horatio Amis House, I, I, I'm really surprised you're not seeing it. If, if you were taking it in the proper orientation, the, the map doesn't show that you're taking a lot of these pictures in the proper orientation.
So I would, I would defer you to two things. One would be that the set that you're looking at was done by the historical consultant, who did confirm that it was not visible. But if you also look at our photo simulation package, which was done by our photo simulation provider, photograph number eight is taken specifically after a request of the Cape Cod Commission in regards to the Amis Horatio House, and it was determined not visible. So that, that finding was confirmed both by the historic consultant in the package you're looking at and in the independent study that was performed.
Is that picture on page 11? Or are you referring to another section? Plate number three?
No, it's photo, if you look to the far left on the photo simulations, because there were updates made, it's going to be photo number eight.
We don't have that.
So it is in your compilation package on page 30.
I believe that's the piece we do not have in our packet. You submitted it, right?
Yeah, they submitted a, a link to like an Adobe compilation of the updated imagery that you have in your email, but I wasn't able to print it for some reason from the town printer server.
So I'm happy to make the number of copies required and send those in. I can also share with you the pictures.
I'm, I'm most concerned with that house, because it is one of our older houses in town that I believe is eligible for the National Register listing.
Yes, and I, I believe that's why I'm a little sensitive in asking about the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to continue the public hearing, so that we can accept information that we requested via, so are you available to come back the first Wednesday, May?
May 1st.
May 1st, yeah.
I may have a hearing conflict on that date. We agreed to May 1st, and I would have to get back to you if that date is not available. I have to check my schedule in the hearing dates.
Oh, well, May 15th.
May 15th. Should work.
So how do you want to work it? Do you wanna, do you want to continue it to-
Continue the public hearing to May 15 to 7:10.
The 15th?
Yeah.
I think, I think we should continue it to the first.
I'll go to the first?
I do.
All right, then she can-
But then if they can't, you're saying you have to check a few times.
It's, it's less, it's not likely that I'll be available on May 1st.
Is that because you already have something scheduled?
Correct.
Maybe your phone ain't on.
All right. So you're not available May 1st?
I cannot confirm my availability right now. If you'd like me to check, we're happy to say May 1st. I can get back to Evan tomorrow to confirm or have to-
I have to set it to a time certain?
15 would be.
Okay.
Yeah, make a most-
Dennis, you're always right. Go ahead.
You can continue the public hearing to May 15 at 7:10.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so now I'd like to open back up the public hearing.
Yeah, it's your matter, darling.
Regarding proposed zoning amendments. Do you guys want to postpone this to May 1st?
It's getting late, buddy.
Hi. So there's one thing on our agenda still left, and it's a public hearing. Dennis?
Really? We should stay to 1 o'clock, what do you mean?
Dennis?
Dennis?
Dennis? We have that public hearing for the May 6, 2019 town meeting warrant, proposed zoning amendments. Do you want to postpone that to continue it to May 1st at 7:10?
Yeah.
I'm exhausted.
I am, I'm, I'm cell towered out.
I'm cell towered out. So that's okay, right?
I think it's okay, but ma'am, note one item, one thing.
Yes.
It's an article submitted by the planning board with perhaps one individual in the audience who would like to speak on it.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on that item?
So there's no, we have-
No, it seems like no. You're okay with us continuing it to May 1st at 7:10? All right, let's do it.
Um, we have, I have to actually, so, the, it was a codification- We have, I have to actually, so there was a codification error in the second warrant article. So I brought this up at the last meeting, and we set, town council made the determination that codification errors, we could have held this public hearing. The incorrect section of the bylaw was 174-5, or Section E of 174-5G. It was just, it cited an incorrect section of the zoning bylaw. Town council determined that we could have held the public hearing, would have been within scope of notice. The motion on town meeting floor would have just had to correct that codification error. We did schedule a new public hearing under the correct code of the zoning bylaw, which is on May 1, but it's a duly advertised hearing at 7:10, so if you were to reschedule this, continue it to May 1, it would have to be at a different time.
It's 7:05.
All right, make a motion to this, public hearing's at 7:05 on May 1 for the zoning articles. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, is that it for our agenda?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I'll roll the updates for me until the next meeting.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you very much, everybody.
That was a nice letter. Really good.